Okay, good evening. We'll call to order this meeting of the Board of Selectmen for August 12th. First item on our agenda is approval of meeting minutes of July 21st.
I move to approve all of the meeting minutes for July 21st, 2014.
Second.
Any changes? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Okay, we want to confirm our future meeting dates. Our next meeting is on August 19th. Is this still work for everyone?
Yep.
Okay, at 6:30. Payroll and vendor warrants.
Move to approve current payroll and vendor warrants.
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Item five is citizen speak. Is there anyone here who wishes to address the board at citizen speak? Okay, a few people. Cheryl, would you like to come first?
Everybody, yes.
Certainly. Could you just all state your names for the record?
I'm Amy Vivian Fleitman, precinct one. I'm a 50-year resident of the town of Milton.
Cheryl Fleitman.
Beth Fleitman.
Thank you all.
And I'm here on behalf of both of my daughters, first starting off with Beth. Beth came to the board last year and complaining about the motorcycles. And you people have done absolutely positively nothing about the noise. Come to our house and try to go to sleep and have these motorcycles revving up and down Blue Hill Avenue, and it's impossible, you're up all night long. I need to have my sleep. I can't go through with these motorcycles. I know there are other things that go on in the town that are more important to you people and to the police, but this is important to us, where we cannot sleep. We have a young couple here who's complaining about it also. It bothers them, it bothers everybody, and we're waiting for you to do something about it. And if you don't, the Tucker Neighborhood Association will take over and we will try to do something about it because it has gotten out of hand. And the second thing I have to say, I do not like the way Cheryl has been treated. She started this whole thing with the airplanes. She got all the information, she got all these politicians to be involved, and she's thrown off this new committee and cannot be on the committee. I think that is absolutely unheard of to do this to her. And I have told her not to give any information that she has to you people. Why should she, after all this work that she has done in a year and a half? It does not fear to her, and that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else for citizen speak tonight?
I do have some things to say.
Oh, Cheryl, yes.
And just in following up on the information on the motorcycles, and I think you're all aware now that I am president of the Tucker Neighborhood Association, there are actually some state regulations that are in place regarding the noise, and we've been told that nothing can be done about this. But in fact, all of these motorcycles that are revving up and down our streets, and I know it's not just 138, I know it's Reed's Dale Road, I know it's Randolph Avenue, there are a lot of problems at this time of year with the motorcycles. So we have Regulation 310 CMR 700. Noise is defined as "sound of sufficient intensity and/or duration as to cause a condition of air pollution." Air pollution means the presence in the ambient airspace of one or more air contaminants or combinations thereof in such concentration and of such duration as to: A) cause a nuisance; B) be injurious; or B) on the basis of current information, potentially injurious to human health or animal life, to vegetation or to property; or C) unreasonably interfere with the comfortable enjoyment of life and property or the conduct of business. So obviously, people's sleep being interrupted is the comfortable enjoyment of life. And then there's another regulation, 310 CMR 7.11, Mass Vehicle Idling Regulation. Motor vehicles. All motor vehicles registered in the Commonwealth shall comply with pertinent regulations of the Registry of Motor Vehicles relative to exhaust and sound emissions. No person shall cause, suffer, allow, or permit the unnecessary operation of the engine of a motor vehicle while said vehicle is stopped for a foreseeable period of time in excess of five minutes. So with both of those statutes, that tells me that there is reasonable cause for the police to stop these people. And I don't see why they can't be sitting on some of these streets, especially on the weekends, in an unmarked car and then flashlights and go after them. They are in the wrong, they all have illegal exhaust systems, and it's becoming a real nuisance. It's not just us complaining, we know of people whose children are waking up crying in the middle of the night from the motorcycles because the revving scares them. And something does need to be done. So I think this is something that you need to discuss with the police department. Because again, I'm not just representing my family, I'm representing the entire Tucker Neighborhood Association.
Thank you, Cheryl. Anyone else for citizen speak?
Chairperson, do you mind if I ask what street is it? Is it Blue Hills Parkway or Blue Hill Avenue?
Yeah, we have a citizen speak responsible. Let's ask that question while you're here so we can get an answer.
I'm sorry, can you hear the question?
Is it Blue Hills Parkway or Blue Hill Avenue?
Blue Hill Avenue. Goes from Blue Hill Avenue, Blue Hills Parkway, to Truman Parkway, up and moving around. And you can hear them loop around the neighborhood.
Because there are state roads that are taking them around.
Okay, let's get the next people up for citizen speak and then we can talk about it later on when we have a response. Hello, could you state your names and your address for the record, please?
Sure, I'm Aaron Hatcher, 102 Brook Road.
I'm Dee Dee Hatcher, also 102 Brook Road.
Thank you.
And yeah, I guess what they're saying, we've noticed, we only moved into Milton maybe two years ago, but we're all in there. The racing of bikes is apparently a big problem, you know, we noticed that. But we're actually wondering what to do about specific motorcycles. Like for instance, about a year ago, one just kind of showed up overnight across the street from us, and it's very loud. And at all times of the night, it comes in and just revs the engine and goes tearing down the street. And like, you're sitting there asleep, and at 2:00 AM, out comes a loud motorcycle, and we don't know what options we really have. And yeah, we do have a three-month-old daughter, and it's kind of disruptive. So I mean, there's a more general issue that I don't know, it may be a little hard to parse, but there's also much more specific ones, and we don't know what our resources are, we just want to raise the issue because, I mean, if there's something that can be done, you know, we'd love to know what our options are.
There seems to be two problems regarding the motorcycles. One is them racing, which they get loud because of the higher speeds, and there's also the motorcycles that are just loud at any speed. The big Harleys that are just shakes the windows.
Just idling as thunderous.
Yeah, even them just idling is really, really loud. And we're on the little stretch of Brook Road that's between Blue Hill Avenue and Blue Hills Parkway, and both of them are really long, straight streets, and they race on both of those, and we can hear on both sides. And also around Brook Road as well because it's kind of straight and long that way. So we're getting it from three directions. And our house doesn't have a front yard, it's literally sitting on the street, so anything that goes by, we can hear. And when we moved in, we really couldn't sleep for several months. We had to consider insulating the windows, soundproofing them, which is really expensive. We managed to get one window of our bedroom, get a plexiglass pane to kind of muffle the noise a little bit.
For those frequencies, though, they still come right through, you know, and muffle some. But we've tried to, we handle our part, you know, to make sure it's not as bad for us, but it ends up being quite expensive to get a plexiglass of the right size at that size and weight, and just a lot of work in general to make it work. But I think we've done about what we can on our side to try to make our home insulated from it, but beyond that.
We don't normally respond at citizen speak. We take, you know, comments and input that you may have, so I just want to be sure that we got your names for the record. Paula, did you got, I didn't write the names down? I was...
My name was Aaron Hatcher, and my wife, Deanna.
Okay, got it.
So we'll look into it and hopefully we can...
We do know one specific biker and where he lives. We're just intimidated to approach him.
Just don't know what to do about it, that's the thing.
You know, we didn't even know what to say to him.
Dealing with them hasn't exactly, dealing with that house hasn't exactly been great in the past, so, you know.
Okay, we'll do some follow-up, but thank you very much for coming in tonight.
Thank you.
Katie, can I mention one more thing?
Yes, Cheryl.
And the other thing that has come to our attention is apparently in our neighborhood, there are some Milton Housing Authority homes, and apparently the housing authority is not being diligent in who they are renting to. Apparently, this motorcyclist lives in one of those homes, and they live with another family, in a two-family, that is a very, very nice family. And I don't understand how this can be allowed when, yes, the owner of that house is paying taxes, but these people really are transients and have no interest whatsoever in the town of Milton, yet they're surrounded by people who do care and are paying taxes, and some are paying quite hefty taxes. So I think that that's also an issue for the housing authority. They need to be much more diligent when they place people in these homes.
I don't know if they have a citizen speak at their meetings, but that might be something to...
I mean, I can address that if you want. They don't place people in the homes. On a Section 8 voucher, the tenant finds the home, and if they find the home, if the landlord is willing to lease it to them, then they are, the housing authority has no say, other than setting the rent.
I think we can either respond later on tonight or at our next meeting if we need to get more information on some of these issues. Does anyone else have anything else to address at citizen speak? Mr. Morash?
Good evening, Steve Morash, Precinct 2, 47 Standish Road. I come to the board with a public safety issue, I believe. We were having some work down in our house, and at the course of the inspection from the Building Department, Electrical Department, on a final electrical inspection, unknown to us, there's a knock on the door, my wife's home alone, and there's a gentleman there claiming to be the electrical inspector for the town of Milton. My wife asked for some identification, and the gentleman has none, representing the town of Milton. She says, "Why would I let you into my house?" She goes, "Well, I'm the electrical inspector." He produces a driver's license and his electrical license from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, I believe, and surprisingly, my wife let him in, he did his final inspection, we passed, and she went to work. I find this to be a little, frightening is probably too strong a word, but a matter of public safety. I asked around, why do Milton employees actually have a Milton town identification that identifies them as town employees? And I was told, no, they don't. That perhaps there's been an ongoing issue with the employees of the town, and it was a negotiable point during union meetings. I find this to be quite unacceptable. There's no reason why a town employee, when asked by a resident to produce identification that they actually are employees of the town of Milton, that someone should let them into their house to do whatever they need to do, should have that, I think, we as property owners, as residents of this town, should have that type of protection. That man happened to be doing a great job for the town of Milton, he did a fine job, but still, that could have been anybody knocking on that door with my wife home alone, saying he was a town employee, here to do an inspection, and terrible things could have happened. I think, I'd like to, I would urge the Board of Selectmen to look into this. If you need support at town meeting, I'm quite sure we can get that rallied, but I think it's an issue we should look at, so I appreciate your concern.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you, Steve. Anyone else for citizen speak tonight? Okay, then if not, number six on our agenda is a continued public hearing, I'm sorry, conduit public hearing. Do we have anyone from NSTAR present tonight? Nobody's here.
They're pretty, pretty simple approvals.
They are, although we can say at one of our previous meetings, we wanted the utility representatives here for the meetings. What's the desire of the board to act on these or to continue these?
Mine would be continue it. To what? Continue it.
Next week.
Is there any urgency that we know of?
Well, I know one is for Curry College, and they've got to be open by, they want to be open by September, I believe, is that correct? So they'll need electricity, obviously. There should be a representative here, no doubt about it. And I agree with Tom, we should continue it, but in the interest of keeping this moving forward, maybe, I don't know.
There's another one here also for Elliott Street, and I don't know if there's any timing issue on the first one.
Elliott Street, that's the 29 units. You think for such big jobs that they would have a representative here, but...
We do have a letter from DPW recommending approval of both of them.
There's no street opening involved, it's all overhead electric.
Yeah, these are just to install lines with no road openings.
Yeah, I mean, it's just very, it's just disturbing that they don't... Absolutely.
It is.
I 100% agree, it should be somebody here, but...
Well, we have a meeting next Tuesday, so we could defer them until then, unless you're aware of some urgency, Dennis, on...
I'm not, I just know that, you know, Curry wants to get open for September. What, I don't, I don't mind...
One week shouldn't matter, I wouldn't think.
One week, I wouldn't think either.
You what?
I wouldn't think a week would matter either. Do we need to, do we need to open the hearing and then continue it? All right, so we'll convene a hearing on two requests from NSTAR to approve approximately nine feet of conduit pole on Elliott Street and six feet of conduit at Brushhill Road. Is there anyone here from the public who is here to talk about these? We could take that testimony if so and continue the hearing until we have NSTAR here. Okay, then if not, do we have a motion to continue?
I'll make a motion to continue the hearing to August 19th. Second that.
Any discussion? Then all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that hearing is continued. Number seven on our agenda is a report from our Building Commissioner Joe Prondak.
Good evening.
Good evening, Joe.
Good evening, Joe.
Joe Prondak, Building Commissioner. So normally, I like to start these reports with our financial status. So I do have to apologize to the board right off the bat. My normal procedure is to print out our computer-generated income report, and then I review that report and analyze it so that I can speak intelligently on it. And so I printed it out last week, and as I've done for the past five years since we've had this computer program. And when I went to analyze it today, I realized that something was way off. And what appears to be happening is the computer program, for some reason, is doubling my numbers, both income and permit numbers generated. So those data sheets that we sent you are, at the moment, unreliable. I spoke to our Internet service provider or our vendor, and they did look into the problem, and they say it's a problem that occurred when they switched servers to a more secure server. They told me they couldn't fix the problem today, but they promised me that they would work on it all night long. So that being said, again, I apologize for that. So we did, we tried to analyze as best we could today, some of the raw numbers from, mostly from fiscal year '14. And what I can say with some certainty, and I hope I'm not shooting myself in the foot, that I believe fiscal year '14, we finished up about $100,000 over fiscal year '13. So that's substantial, and it may be more, it may very well be more. I just want to be careful, until I get this problem fixed, I want to be careful and...
So is that an increase in permits, or is it just an increase in the value of...
Increase in fees received.
No, I understand that.
Yeah, increase in the, well, permit numbers, I didn't really look at those numbers, I was more focused on the, on the actual dollar value.
I know you had some big jobs come in.
Yes, and most notably would have been the Curry Dorm, the Elliott Street project, and Laborey College.
Fifty Elliott.
The hospice did not get their permit issued last year.
Right.
But it did issue just in the beginning of this fiscal year, so that'll reflect in next year's numbers. So that being said, I think, I think that if that holds true, that kind of a number is, is pretty impressive, and again, speaks to the health and economy of the town, as well as the construction industry overall. I'm not sure that we'll be able to rely on similar numbers next year. Usually, bigger projects, we hear about them ahead of time, and I'm not anticipating necessarily any big projects unless some of the bigger housing projects were to get underway.
Right.
But that's still kind of a crystal ball issue. Other than that, as far as specific projects are concerned, Curry College is getting ready to open their dorm to students this year, Brandon Dormatory. Fifty Elliott Street is in the process of getting ready to seek occupancy for that, for that building.
Are they done, yeah?
They're close to done, yeah, they're in their final punch list. And again, they're looking for occupancy sometime in September. The hospice, Milton Hospice, has broken ground finally, they did get their permits, and they're building foundations right now. And then the housing, new house starts, seems to be healthy. We have, of course, across the street here, Mary Webster Lane, where the women's club was. We have several houses up on Blue Hill Avenue, behind 1661 Canton Avenue.
Yep.
There are three houses there, there are five up on Beechwood Lane, which was the old Boyle Estate, Brushhill, 685-ish Brushhill Road. So those are the most notable aspects of what's happening right now.
So how is, how is the paperless permitting coming?
I knew that question was coming. It is, it is a challenge. I foresee that once we iron out all the kinks and work out all the procedures, that it will be beneficial. But right now, it is a steep learning curve, and I expect, in all honesty, a year's time to iron all of this out. And one of the biggest things that's happening right now is our staff is spending a lot of time...
Handholding.
Teaching people how to use the system. And it's, it's trying to introduce a technology system to an industry that's not typically involved in that, or deeply involved in it. So a majority of our customers need assistance in getting their permits in and done.
Is it going to be similar to the Boston application?
Oh, no, we're going to be much better, much better than Boston.
No, because I just, I heard recently that, and the new building commissioner in Boston is Buddy Christopher.
Yep.
And he's going to change it all up again, because, in fact, they're getting rid of the whole thing and bringing in a whole new system.
That may be good news for Boston, yes.
Yeah, because it is a disaster.
Yes, yep. But our system, I think, is, basically, is a, it's a good fundamental system, it has a good tie to the database so that the properties are, it's easy to access a property and permit targeted to that property. It really just comes down to all the intricacies of the different permits, the several different types of permits, the several different types of licensing that goes on with each permit, the several different types of insurance that various contractors, and it's not all the same. And then you get into the specifics of, you know, the many, many facets of the building code and the zoning code, which no two projects are the same.
What about plans, blueprints?
Plans are, we...
You still have to bring them in?
It is faster, right, so the system will accommodate plans, you can submit, upload plans electronically to a certain size, we haven't quite figured out what that maximum size is yet. But for example, a larger project like Curry College, they would bring plans in on a desk.
Yep.
But most projects will be able to submit the plans electronically and will do the reviews electronically on the, on the large monitors. And that's certainly going to be a benefit from a storage point of view, because we are absolutely out of physical file space. The storage room downstairs is overrun with, with storage, I think we all know that. And so that's a, that's a tremendous benefit. But then you still have the issue, in other words, somebody, if somebody, when somebody gets a permit, they also get a set of plans back that has to remain in the field, so that paper aspect doesn't go away. When you go out to do an inspection, or even when you go to build, you have to have that approved set of plans that you build from and that you inspect from. So at some point, we have to take a paper set, stamp every page saying, yes, this is the approved set, and send it back out in the field.
At least on the storage requirement.
Right. But yes, ultimately, the goal is completely paperless, except for that one part, returning the printed copy of the plan.
Well, I know when I first got elected to this board, I used to receive some complaints about your department, and I can say that unequivocally since you hired that extra inspector. I don't think I've got any cause, so it's...
Good news.
Well, it's good that you're able to get permits out the doors instead of out in the field a lot, you know? It's much more efficient, I believe.
Yep.
So good, good job.
And I think that once we iron out some of the other, as we close out some of the other bigger issues in town, like Elliott Street, for example, we'll be able to dedicate, dedicate more time to improving that system and make it work more smoothly.
If I may ask one more question, Chairperson. Is it your department people would complain to about unregistered cars?
Yes.
Okay, because my wife and I, we go for a walk a lot of evenings, and I don't know if it's just our area of town or whatever, but the amount of unregistered cars, cars parked behind trees that are unregistered.
That is historically, always has, and apparently always will be, our biggest complaint, unregistered cars and commercial vehicles.
Right.
That's always, we have the most...
Openly visible in drive.
Everywhere.
So how do we correct that?
It's hard to dedicate a lot of time to that. The way we deal with it, essentially, is, is we deal with them on a complaint-by-complaint basis. We don't really have the time to go around looking for it. We do occasionally, but by and large, it's dealt with, as a call comes in, we record it in the system, we assign an inspector to it, they go out and look at it, verify that it's there, run the plates with the police department, or run whatever's available, if it's a plate or VIN number, confirm that it's not registered, send a notice to the owner. Sometimes they respond right away, and other times, it's a couple of notices, filing a complaint in court.
But you will always respond if somebody calls?
Any complaint we get, we will always respond. Some, kind of like, kind of like, I like to say, we're kind of like the IRS, we're a little bit slow, but we don't go away.
All right, we have a lot of people waiting, so if there's nothing else for Joe, then Joe, we'll let you go.
The only one other thing I have is, since Joe is here and since we had a citizen speak, I might want to just kind of address that.
I can tell you that in my department, I'll promise you, within two weeks, everybody will have a town-issued ID. We have relied on our state-issued building inspector IDs, for example, over the years, but I can certainly have everybody go to the police station and get a town-issued ID.
Okay, well, let's try to address that globally to town-wide, and I think maybe we should ask the town administrator to, and the assistant town administrator, who's the HR director, to probably take a more global look at this and talk with Joe about it.
Sure, I didn't even get that done.
Okay, good.
Good.
All right.
Thanks, Joe.
Thank you, Joe. All right, next item on our agenda is a meeting with the library trustees.
Hello there.
Hi, Chris, Will.
Chris, Mrs. Hodgman. Hi, Will.
How you doing? Haven't been here for years, a couple times in a month or two. Thanks for having us. We're here tonight, we have sent a package along to you from our meeting last night, kind of our deliberations regarding the two trees on the library property. So for those of you who've been in town a long time, when you walk by or drive by the library, there's two what used to be beautiful enlarged trees, old copper beech tree and the sugar maple tree, that, it's sad to say, they have, you know, declined in health over many, many, many years. And the trustees voted last night to have the trees removed. So I just kind of want to walk through a little bit, we did provide you information of kind of the chronology of, you know, the history of the trees and kind of our deliberation. I just wanted to take a couple minutes and walk through that with you and see if you had any questions. This wasn't an easy thing for us to all do. So in 2013, we actually were notified by a couple of the department heads of the danger of some of the, of the tree, the status of the tree, and the possibility of branches and the tree itself possibly falling and hurting people. So we actively started working on that several of our meetings since 2013 and 2014, to try to deliberate on what to do. So we reviewed the old arborist report, and actually, unbeknownst to most of us, found out that in 2008, when the new building was put in place, the arborist at that time did report of the, the poor health of the trees and actually recommended that the trees be removed at that time. I think people are very reluctant to take trees down, and the board at that time, and I think probably also the group that was handling the whole building, building decided to try to maintain the trees and see if they could survive. We reviewed that arborist report, we met with the conservation committee and commission and discussed, you know, with them, the trees. They also... We reviewed that arborist report. We met with the conservation committee and commission and discussed, you know, with them, the trees. They also did an onsite visit themselves after our deliberations with them, and also agreed with the recommendation to have the trees removed. We had another, to their recommendation, we hired another arborist to do another assessment, just so we'd have, you know, not just one person, kind of, but a few people. The tree warden, Branch Lane, we kind of laugh at his name, it matches his title. Anyways, Branch Lane also, you know, read through the reports that we had and looked through the trees and reviewed it. We did also hold an open forum in March, you know, publicized it through the web, through the media, whatever, to try to gain any public input, just because we know that this is a very sensitive type of issue. And we held another public forum last night, after a lot of our other, you know, deliberations, to just, again, provide some more information. So, you know, really, just here today to let you know that we, we really feel strongly that the public safety concerns are, are large enough that we should take action. We don't think the trees are savable, and we'd like to do this. This is kind of a good time for us to do it in the summertime. Will has conferred with folks about, you know, the, the use of the library is minimal at this time in the summer. If we can have the trees taken down now, it's probably the safest time to do that. And really, just to stress, you know, that if we were to delay this decision, we just think that if there was something or, you know, someone that was harmed because of those trees, and since this has been brought to our attention, so it's a known issue that, you know, we could actually be under, you know, a lot more scrutiny than we would if we just left it. So, so that's really where we are, you know, kind of-
Kristen, who, who would take the tree down? Would it be the DPW, or would it be subcontracted?
We believe we're going to have a contractor do it, so we actually have gotten a few quotes. So, and talked to, you know, Anne Marie about actually getting quotes and how many we need to do. So, it's under a $10,000 job, so we're looking to have Doug Hunt take it down. He's done a lot of work for the town. So, that's-
Which, which one is the sugar maple? Is that the one at the front?
The first one, as you come up from this.
I mean, it says fifty percent of it is dead, so.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, the beech, you know, it's, I mean, beech trees are so rare and beautiful. But, they require a lot of, you know, space for their roots, and I think, you know, the movement of the house in the parking lot was always a concern and a risk to further damaging the tree. So, unfortunately, you know, we feel that-
Either the trees, trees be replaced, or?
Yes, yep, yep. So, sorry, I didn't really get into that, but we have talked about that. We haven't made us, you know, final decisions. We'd like to actually, we're looking to open up to the public, to have them come in and maybe provide us some information or feedback. So, Will has gotten quotes from A. Thomas Nursery on just kind of some different types of trees and the cost. We actually put together kind of a sub-tree committee, if you will, of the library trustees quite a while ago. And we'll probably defer to that group to kind of schedule, you know, a public hearing, to get people to come in and have some input, you know? Will's also had some folks come in and look at placement of the trees around the property. So, maybe not in that exact location, but what types of trees in what location. And so, we just felt like that might be a way to get some more public input and let them feel, you know, I'm sure everyone isn't going to be happy about having the tree taken down, and we aren't either, but-
Like you said, public safety is first.
Yep, yep. So, so we haven't made final decisions yet on the replacement, but we're looking at least three trees. The conservation commission is interested in, you know, kind of participating and is, you know, at least helping us with that as well. So, am I missing anything?
You are very thorough.
Yeah.
I'll just reiterate that it's, it's not an easy decision, because, you know, anytime you talk about natural resources which are depleting already today, it, it's a very hard decision, and that's why so much time and effort was put into it before a final decision was made.
The grounds at the library are beautiful, so it's too bad they have to go, but it sounds like you have an alternative.
Right.
Yeah. Have a good plan in place to get some public input on ideas for replacement. Yeah. So, we just want to make sure that you are all aware of it. You may get calls on it. It's, you know, it's a town-wide, you know, property. So, and I think all the facts are there. There's an FAQ. We're going to plan to make those available in, again, in the media and publish a letter, you know, in the papers. And Will has the fact sheets available at the library for people that come in if they have questions, so.
Well, thank you for letting us know.
Thank you.
Making that report.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kristen.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is a meeting with the Fire Space Needs Study Committee. Borash is here, and it looks like other members of his committee are here, if you'd all, whatever your preference is.
Well, it's nice to be here again.
Steve, before, before you get started, I just want to note a disclosure on, on the record. You know, I, I work for a law firm, that's the Towns Bond Council, and obviously, any construction project will involve bonding. So, I am working with town council and getting an opinion that, as to what pieces of this, and we think it's going to be most of them that I can take part in, and maybe a limited piece of it that I may recuse myself from. But, I'm going to be getting an opinion of council, and that's, that will go to the Ethics Commission, and we'll get them to sign off on it. So, for purposes of tonight, I'm going to be here to listen to what your presentation is.
We appreciate that. It's a little bit like, being on one of these committees is a little bit like going to Goodfellas. We tried to get up, but they dragged us back every time. We made our presentation of our committee. I did introduce our committee, Tom Kelly, Tom Hess, Brian Chewie, and Chief Jack Grant of the Milton Fire Department, and also President of the Massachusetts Fire Chiefs Association, which has been a great resource for us. We made our presentation at town meeting, and quite frankly, we didn't want to lose any steam, if you will, coming out of town meeting. We had one meeting since town meeting with the town moderator about what the direction of this committee should be while we're in this period between town meetings. So, our recommendations did, they stand the way they did. And there were basically a couple of issues that we put before town meeting. Two of them really are out of the realm of what our committee did, but we wanted to make sure that they were in front of you. One was the whole issue of mutual aid, that we actually pay for a firefighter to come back in to go out of town, but not staff him in town. But that's an issue for you folks, and we just wanted to make sure we did keep that issue alive. Very, very live discussion within the committee, and that deals with staffing. Another recommendation was the whole issue of what is going to be the role of the Milton Fire Department moving forward? Is it going to be a traditional fire department, as we currently have now? Or will we, in fact, as Chief Grant has proposed, really look at and maybe step up to do fire-based DMS? And again, that's an issue that the committee can't make a decision on, but that decision will dictate the size of the fire department. It drives the number of bays and equipment and firefighters slash EMTs that have to be housed in these fire stations. So, that's another issue that we really need to kind of come to, come to, come to griffith as we move this process forward. I think one of the other issues was, what do we do with, with this committee? So, as Brian Wall said, we did not dismiss you at town meeting. You're still the Fire Space Needs Committee. And to that point, one of our last recommendations was, we need, we think we've gone as far as we can as a committee of citizens. But we have some good expertise on the committee, make no mistake about it. But, we wanted to get someone else in that knew a lot more about fire construction, firehouse construction, to take a look at what we had done and come up with a better plan of what this might look for, and give you, as a selectmen, town meeting members in the town, just an idea of where this process and this project may look like.
Like a master plan, kind of?
Pardon?
Like a master plan, kind of?
Well, it's sort of like that, or, if you will, to take, I mean, we just heard from the library. They had a library building committee. We all know about the, the major project before this, which was the school and the school building committee. And we think that, just given the nature of this resource that the town has with three fire stations, that there should be a fire station building committee, if you will. And how does that all get back together within town meeting? So, that's another issue that has to happen. But we do know that we need some expertise to come together and put this plan together. Things like scheduling of how these, how these buildings get rebuilt or renovated would need to be part of that. It's a logical thing that we believe happens when we look at this, but it's not going to be like a two-year project. So, how do you stage that in? It does go into bonding and funding and all those other things that have to be taken into account, as some bonding goes down, other bonds go up. So, we decided that, working with the town moderator, that it would be best to get a good idea of what this might cost. So, we put together a request for information, an RFI, that we put out in the street to eight companies that, thanks to Chief Grant, who solicited his membership, companies that, A, had expertise in building fire stations in Massachusetts, and B, people weren't afraid to hire them again if they had to work in the project by their town. And we had, came up with these eight companies. We solicited just their input of, given the scope, what we wanted to do, what might the cost be for that? Those solicitations, the request for information, is due back on Friday. We received three of them back already from two very good companies. And that ballpark range is running between fifty to seventy-five thousand dollars, be a good ballpark to kind of figure that out with, about what we may need to this next stage. Our plan was to submit an article to town meeting, which we have done, to the Board of Selectmen, I think you have that, and meet with the Warrant Committee, and hopefully bring that to some sort of a, bring it to a town meeting in, in October, and then from there, see what, what happens with that. So, that's the next stage, we believe, of this process. And we want to keep this ball rolling. That would give us at least, if we could get that out of town meeting in October, we believe we could then put an RFP out on the street between October and, say, the end of the year, and then hopefully get some kind, someone working on this, so we continue our progress on this. Because, as you know from the, from the report that we presented, these fire stations are in pretty dire straits. And that's, but there is that other piece that we talked about, and that was the fourth recommendation, I apologize. But, there are some emergency repairs that probably need to be made in these firehouses. And, you know, talking with Bill Ritchie about where do you start, and he said, well, where, where do you start? And it's not, Bill's done a great job, as you all know, for the town, but it's a matter of resources and committing to that and looking at what really needs to be done with some of these structures.
Yeah, it, it clearly is a dilemma. I mean, like you said, at town meeting, it was 1961 when the study was first done?
That was the first study committee.
And they were decrepit then, so.
The interesting part that we found was that, that was ten years after the East Milton Fire Station was constructed and already, there was talk then that it was already obsolete.
Yeah. I mean, our biggest problem right now, like you say, is money. You know, taking a quick peek at, because obviously, this wouldn't be an under-the-levee limit, it would, it would be an override, a debt-exclusion project. We'd never fit it within our tax rate. And taking a look at, quick look at the over-the-levee limit debt right now, and when it might start falling off, you know, which is primarily the library and schools out there. And it's going to be a while before there's any appreciable decrease in, in that. So, I, I guess it becomes a practical thing of, you know, how much can the taxpayers, how much are the taxpayers willing to, to commit?
I couldn't agree with you more, Tom. I mean, it's a, it's a question of wannna and can, and that's, I guess that's why they pay you guys the big bucks.
Steve, I have a question for you. So, your article is really about a feasibility study. That's what you're seeking. You're looking for appropriation to do this feasibility study that you mentioned might be in the ballpark of fifty to seventy-five.
Right.
Because it seems that we should be getting some public input as we go through the process, as to some of the issues you just raised, and some others you didn't raise yet, which, which I know you're aware of, and your report addresses it, which is locations of fire stations.
That's why I keep saying master plan, to kind of look at a timeline, to look at, you know, if you give up. And it could be an architect kind of person, but, but somebody that understands fire stations, to put timelines on it, you know? You know, how should it flow? Where should, like you say, where should it be, as opposed to just plans?
If I may speak to the location issue. We looked at, the first thing we wanted to see was, could we consolidate the Milton Fire Department to two stations? And that became an issue of runtimes for response. There are some national, there are national standards that we need to meet, not only for structural firefighting, but also for medical responses. We looked at available land that the town owns, and we thought we had two sites that we could have worked something out with. One was at the corner of Senna Street and Brook Road. And the other one was up here on Canton Ave by, on the conservation land. And we found that was conservation land, that kind of threw that scheme out of the way. Those two locations actually would work very nicely for two stations to support the Milton Fire Department. Once we had to take that Canton Avenue off the table, then the two-station scheme kind of went away. It just, it didn't work anymore. It was just, you're talking about taking homes, you're talking about buying property, and that just drives the cost of the project up. So, what was interesting about this is that the three locations that the current fire stations are at work very well to meet the standards for fire suppression, firefighting, as well as for medical response. So, that's kind of why we're in that location. It was, one of the things that was very rewarding in the last week was getting a report from one of the consultants that said, he commended the committee, and I'll talk to these gentlemen behind me. It was probably the best feasibility study he'd seen by a committee, a local committee, in twenty years of looking at fire stations across Massachusetts, which I thought served us well. So, we're pretty happy with the four locations, the three locations, rather. There was some discussion at town meeting about renovation versus new construction. We think that's something that we need an expert to take a look at, what we thought the recommendations were. Could you do something in East Milton Square? Our recommendation was to put a new fire station at the existing location of the former East Milton Library. Maybe you could do, a consultant come in, a company, and do a major re-hall and renovation of the East Milton Station where it currently exists. But we looked at the other side of the street, if you will, across the expressway, because it just made a lot of sense to increase some, to decrease some of our runtimes in other parts of town. We looked at the DPW yard. The runtimes were just not acceptable for us. And given some of the things that we heard about what the town would like to do with that property, didn't fit into that as well. There was even a discussion about putting a fire station on the deck. There is a lot of plans about what we want to do, what the town wants to do with the deck. And God loves someone to deal with that part for a fire station. I hope they find someone prominent girl going to do that, right? But we just, we just thought that wasn't a viable solution at some point. So, I mean, that's Atherton Street. It's an old building. It's a great building. It doesn't meet some of the current seismic, any of these locations being renovated still do not meet current codes and doesn't bring it up to standards. And that's kind of what was driving us for new construction. We thought there's an opportunity at Atherton Street to build a station behind it, make that a surplus property. You could do, some of the proposals we talked about were perhaps moving the auxiliary fire department up there with, with the Historical Society for the Fire Department, and then moving the Milton Art Museum, give them some space up there at the old, at the new, the newest, oldest- oldest Atherton Street Fire Station, so a surplus property. And we thought perhaps a suggestion would be to use the current chemical house here as some space for Bill Ritchie's operation with the consolidated facilities. There are things you can do with that. We think the current main fire station needs to be taken down and a new one constructed after it's constructed, to do all the things that we feel the Milton Fire Department needs.
What I was, what I really was trying to get at is, and I guess maybe this is a discussion we collectively might need to have, but how do we set up a process for getting some public input into some of these things? Your committee has spent some time looking at a lot of these issues. The town meeting heard the presentation, but how do we get public input? We have the Art Center where we're occupying East Milton Library right now. We have another, I think, six years to go on that lease. So, there's various interested parties. And as you mentioned, there was talk about renovation versus new construction at town meeting. There's probably a lot more opinion on that if we were to have some kind of a public process. Just a way for us to hear from people, especially people in the affected areas, what are their thoughts on some of these ideas? And maybe we need to give some thought to how we handle that.
I think it's, I totally agree with you. We need to have an open process that citizens can have their input to what our recommendations were as a committee.
Maybe it's a matter of scheduling a forum at some point, just open up the public, where you'd give a presentation similar to what you did at town meeting for the general public and not just for town meeting members. But Mr. Hess has a point. Do you want to come up, Tom, to the microphone?
Hey, Tom. Tom Hess. I just wanted to comment, I think public input is critical to this process. And I think it would be ideal to have that built into this next, this next phase of analysis where we can get some specialized expertise from professionals on board. I think that that will, it will help both ways. The public input will help the consultants do their job and the consultants will help keep the public best informed. So, I think it's a great idea. I wouldn't want to delay the idea of getting some professionals in until after that. I think it really goes hand in hand. So, I just wanted to make that.
Yeah, I think I like the idea of professionals, it's just a matter of professionals and doing what? You know, do we need architect yet or do we need more just consulting help at this stage?
I think we need both, you're right. I mean, I wasn't suggesting we don't get professionals, but just that we create a process so that we can get some public input.
Yeah. I think that makes sense, too.
I think, you know, we've made a lot of assumptions that need to be vetted. For example, whether the Atherton Street property is large enough to build a new facility and keep the old one. We think it is, but, you know, this is the sort of thing that, before we go too far, it would be good to have people in and confirm that.
Has there been any communication between your committee and the Master Plan Committee?
Not with the Master Plan Committee. We did send a report, a copy of our report with Rick Neely on the government's study committee. So, we'd love to sit down with them at some point. I think it's definitely time to do that.
I don't know, Tom, you're on that committee. Do you have a sense of whether that's something that committee would view outside their scope or whether that's something that should be discussed?
Honestly, don't know, but it certainly can't hurt to discuss it. I mean, at least bring it up to them, yeah. Yeah, I mean, it is the future of the town, so.
Absolutely.
Yeah. I would think so.
Okay. Anything else? Anything else you'd like to add or any questions or comments that we have?
I'm good, but the rest are to me. Tom, Amy?
We're good.
Brian?
I'm ready.
Chief?
Now, the only last question I have is, and I've read through the report only once, and I don't remember, but did you at all address whether the feasibility of looking at one public safety facility as opposed to separate police and fire facilities?
I talked with the chief of police.
And I know what his opinion is on that.
Well, you know, I had, before I went into emergency management, I was in Boston, I was with the fire department. I remember having these discussions with the fire commissioner at the time, and one of the things he said was, you know, people, this is Leo Stapleton, said, "People see us as public safety and they like to put us in the same box all the time, but it's really two different jobs, it's two different kinds of things."
Right, I understand it is.
We, the fire service will run out of a station and make their runs and respond to incidents. Police department's more of a patrol kind of based operation and they kind of don't get along. I mean, operationally, they don't get along well, it's two different jobs, even though it is all encompassed in public safety. And, no, when I think of public safety, I also think of public works as being a part of public safety. I think the public health is a part of public safety, so it's a real broad net and there are very few instances where it does work well together.
Yeah, I know a lot of towns have done it.
Yeah.
We've never really talked to them in terms of how well it works, but, but, yeah, when you look at it in terms of perhaps saving space and making surplus land, there may be an opportunity, but like you say, and I totally understand most of them, even though it's one building, it's really two buildings in one, it's kind of like a wall down the middle.
Yeah, we did a little research and there doesn't appear to be much if any space-saving in the facility itself. As far as citing, you know, we were a little bit concerned, again, wanting to work within the constraints of the properties that the town has, that, you know, could we even fit a combined facility on any of these sites?
Right.
Okay. Okay, anyone, anything else?
Good.
Okay, then if you have nothing else, Steve, to add?
No, we're good.
Okay, then thank you very much.
And we'll be in front of, I guess, the Warrant Committee with that article, is that true?
Yes, and it's gone to town council for review and to work.
Okay, terrific. Thank you. Anything, and please give us a call and we'll, we're happy to answer your questions.
Okay.
Thanks very much.
Thank you all. Number ten on our agenda is a meeting with the Chair of the Town Government Study Committee, Rick Neely.
Director.
Night, Chief. Rick? Okay, so number ten, meeting with the Town Government Study Committee Chair, Rick Neely. Rick, thank you for joining us tonight.
Thank you, thank you for having me. All right, let me start off and just say, we've obviously been meeting over the last few months. We did have, you recall from the fall town meeting, a change in the whole process and a change in the membership of the committee.
Yes.
Much of the past five months, we've had about seven members, so we're hoping to have the full complement, nine members, but sure.
We have one to appoint for you tonight.
That'd be great. So, in any case, why don't I start off by referring to the priorities we've established, and then I'm also going to refer to the Department of Revenue Report and just give you some feedback on that, and I'm also going to ask you for some feedback.
Okay.
So, just to alert you ahead of time. In any case, the committee has met over, as I said, the last few months, and what it's done, for example, is to come up with a series of screening criteria, and much of this goes back to Tom, which you presented the committee back two years ago. And that, for example, includes, for example, looking and focusing on increased revenue or reducing cost or increasing productivity without increasing cost and/or increasing real or perceived value, such as the improvement of coordination between departments or positions, and other things such as lesser time commitment or reduced frustration levels by the public, improvement of the quality of services. Those are some of the factors we're looking at. In doing so, we've decided to look at various structural changes. And one of those structural changes, for example, is the composition of the Board of Selectmen, the number of selectmen. Another is the financial management, such as CFO or appointed treasurer. Another one has been the town meeting, and you've heard some of those recommendations in the past that we've made, and I think some of those worked out recently. Also looking, continue to look at the town administrator's position. That was a past recommendation and we continue to, I have an interest in seeing that as well. We're also looking at appointed versus elected boards and commissions. Revisiting the consolidation of the parks, cemetery and DPW. We did look at that two years ago and that, we didn't come in with a recommendation at that time. And we're looking at that in connection with the consolidated facilities evolution. We're also looking at long-range planning capability within the town and execution, and also financial and technology-related matters. In the list we added, we have, this is all out of a whiteboard session now, so it's an ambitious list, so we're not going to get to all of that in the same time period and the committee doesn't have enough members at this point to even study all this at the same time. But we also included investment management, regionalization, renewable resources and customer service, services to the town, so we went through a whole series of that. Again, the Department of Revenue recommendations was a focus that you asked our committee to focus on, and in doing so, I'm just going to refer to that, just to give you a sense as to where we are in that. And I don't know if you have, I'm going to come out of the report with various comments and I'll just ask you to comment if you have any questions. One of the key recommendations of the Department of Revenue Report, which was actually, the report itself was a basis of one of our recommendations, the reinforced centralized management. So, we were looking at this in terms of a new structure, lines of authority, and for example, one of this is the situation is that in the town, we're looking at increasing the duties and power of the town administrator. I know that recently that your board has adopted that, but we don't think that's gone far enough. So, we would go back to the recommendation that we made to you in the past year, which includes changes that would require legislation. So, we believe that is important to continue working to get the board away from day-to-day duties, more into strategic planning and away from the tactical. And that's an emphasis we'd like to see and see more transfer and delegation of authority to the town administrator.
Rick, can you give us an example?
Also, the appointing authorities and appointments, in some cases, the recommendations we had before would have the town administrator doing the hiring with, in some cases, if it needed to be, you would come to the Board of Selectmen. But in a lot of the positions that aren't a director, for example, of a department, it would be done by the town administrator.
Would that include department heads?
Department heads in the recommendation, as I recall, we had that being approved by the Board of Selectmen. So, the town administrator would do all the interviewing and heavy work and at the same time, it still would require, in the case of a department head, approval by the board. Then like an assistant department head or something like that would be approved by the town administrator.
Okay. But the idea would be for the Board of Selectmen to act, or like a Board of Directors as opposed to the?
Correct.
Going more towards a stronger town administrator, if not a town manager form of government, which would require a charter change, as you suggested.
Right, even some of the recommendations, if you go back to that prior recommendation, we have in that recommendation from a year and a half ago, a job description, extensive job description, and that job description includes activities that would require the legislation and the change. That's also detailed here on the report on page eight as well.
We took some baby steps, Rick, as you know, a few weeks ago. We delegated some duties to the town administrator. There's more that we'd like to, but the town council's recommendation was that some of the things we had on our list would require a charter change, so. But there's more that we want to follow up on. Tom, you had raised even the issue that we had tonight about the NSTAR and the other utility hearings, whether we could consider delegating that. We're looking into that still, whether that's doable.
I think that makes sense. I mean, it just, again, you get away from some of this material, I experienced that when I was here, and it certainly makes sense for you to consider moving that to the town administrator.
How would the public hearing part of it work?
Well, the town administrator would just convene a public hearing and same notice provisions would all apply, so notice would be given, it just wouldn't be before the board, it would be a hearing in front of the town administrator.
So, one of the others, we're looking at, you know, is the financial side. The town is very fragmented, duties are fragmented, the accountability is fragmented. We're actually, like, with charts as to what functions are performed by who and functions are split all over the place. So, in any case, we have met with the town treasurer reviewing that. So, it really crosses a number of functional areas and we are pleased, and we did meet with Michael Zulus' committee with the town school consolidation, and that's certainly a positive step in terms of trying to improve some of the processes that take place, so that's, we support that, but we think the town, at this point, we're looking at other towns, we're researching what other towns are doing with regard to these functions, taking a look at what Mass Municipal Association can offer for information, also going over peer list of communities and going through that peer list of communities and seeing what functional, you know, bases do they have for their, where they operate their financial model. So, that's in process right now, not an easy one, but clearly, but if you just, when you look at this split of duties all over the place, it's very hard to track accountability with one person responsible. And that also leads into expanding the size of the Board of Selectmen. We also are in the midst of phone interviews with other towns, the criteria being that those towns that have existing five-member Board of Selectmen as well as a representative town meeting. So, we are soliciting feedback as to what these towns think in terms of what are the reasons they went there and what their feeling is in that. So, at this point, we actually have not consulted with you, and so we would be interested in the opinion of this board individually, obviously, because it's an individual opinion, really, than a collective opinion, but you don't expect the board to take a vote on this, but we would like feedback as to how the board feels about expanding this board from three to five members. The concept behind it would be that you have so much on your plate, there's so much to do. In combination with delegating more to the town administrator, the board would be able to address larger issues. The downside, one of the potential downsides, is the town administrator is going to get loaded. Loaded in terms of additional workload from five people instead of three people. So, that's what we're considering, is what's the impact on the town administrator and the staff? So, that's a consideration, but certainly in terms of the workload for the board, I'd have to say it's increased from the time I was on the board, and I think it's something that, again, I'm looking for some feedback.
At the moment, we have a number of projects pending. I think, you know, we've got three 40Bs at various stages. We've got all kinds of, the town farm, the East Milton Parking Day, there's a lot of real estate or development-related projects that are pending before, but I think probably more than at most times, probably not every time. Sure, over the years, there's been a lot going on, Rick, when you were here, the landfill closure was a huge issue. So, at different times, there are going to be different challenges, but speaking personally, my view on the five-member board would be the only way to, the only way to consider going to a five-member board would be if you went to a stronger town administrator role, because to go to a five-member board and have the town administrator reporting everything to five people rather than three people is going to be a huge burden on the town administrator, whereas if you increase the duties of the town administrator, you make the five-member board more like the Board of Directors. Then it's just the bigger items that the town administrator, so I think you should, I think they should be tied together. If we were to go to a five-member board, it should be with the stronger town administrator, although even if we were to stay with a three-member board, I'd still like us to move in the direction of a town manager or a stronger town administrator.
But then, for example, sorry, Tom, for example, in Easton, they have a five-member board.
They have a town manager, too.
He's a town administrator, actually. He's not a town manager. And the town administrator only deals with the chairperson, or chairman of the Board of Selectmen, and then it's up to the chairman to send out the emails to the rest of the board. But the four other members do not contact the town administrator. In Easton, it's just the chairman.
Interesting.
Yeah.
I mean, open meeting laws, is there, unless it's just scheduling, that you could email the board?
Well, the one advantage I can see to the five-member board is it certainly gives you the ability to then break into subcommittees. I mean, you could have multiple subcommittees, or two, that sometimes make things easier to accomplish. You could actually have conversations between two select people and without violating open meeting laws and, I mean, there's certainly a lot of benefits to it. You know, similar concerns, you know, would you be overwhelming the town administrator, especially based upon the fact that, you know, we're doing everything, you know, virtually at this point, but at some point, I can see tremendous benefits to it, especially once we get to that point where we're more of a policy-setting board and a strategic planning board, like Rick says.
Both systems have pros and cons.
Yeah. But certainly not opposed to it, let's put it that way.
Okay. Sorry, if you want to add any more in terms of any feedback for us, so?
No, that's what I had to, like, how do you, what would make a town go to five members? Like, for example, in Oak Bluffs, which I was in recently, they have a population of 3,000 people and they have a five-member board, yet we have 27,000 and a three-member board.
Well, usually, it has been workload. I mean, I can't explain what happened in Oak Bluffs. That's unusual. It's generally larger towns have gone that way, but certainly there are larger towns also still with three-member boards, so, I think, as I recall, Belmont, I think, may have stayed at three members, and Hingham maybe three, but, you know, right now, there's at least 15 other peer towns that we've identified as having five. at least 15 other peer towns that we've identified as having five, the peer towns being, in terms of representative town meeting and larger population. I can't explain why a small town would be five already, unless, again, maybe it was just a matter of just preference within the operations. Maybe there was a time committed by some of the folks that wasn't, didn't have time.
I mean, certainly, there are instances where we wish we had five members, because when it's two against one, it's not pretty. That's the only time I wish we had.
You create a different dynamic, yeah, certainly, when you have...
You know?
I think it's harder to get to three than it is to get to two.
Exactly, yeah.
When you're trying to make a, you know, really contentious decision, you really need to convince three people, you know, or at least you have to convince two other of your colleagues, rather than one other colleague, to join you on one side versus the other.
The other thing, Rick, and I think we struggle in terms of how to do it, is, and clearly, you know, most of us come from the business side, so, you know, can see the benefit of a, you know, of a CEO, CFO model, but clearly, in the town, it's hard to have centralized management when you've got, you know, elected boards and the reporting, you know, they don't report to centralized management, it's decentralized, and it always will be, as long as, I mean, I can see that there could be a rule for separate boards, if those boards, again, become policymaking, you know, that the parks deal with park issues, not maintenance of, and staffing issues, you know, similarly with cemetery. But, to try and convince those boards that that is a good way to go would be tremendously difficult, and to try and have a strong town manager with those, the structure we have in place, I'm not sure is going to do a lot of good, might even frustrate a strong town administrator.
No, that's a fair issue in terms of, we're looking at that as well. I mean, it's also a fair issue in terms of the CFO recommendation, and the question becomes, do you go to the expense and trouble of having a CFO that doesn't have responsibility for all the finance?
Right.
First of all, what person would want to have responsibility for all the finance without all the, you know, people reporting to him or her?
Right, yeah.
So, that's an interesting piece. So, we had, certainly, the governmental model is not as simple as a corporate model.
And, that's why you really have to tie these issues together, because...
That's right, because there's a lot of building blocks that have to happen before you get to that.
Yeah, exactly. I do think the strong town administrator is even more important than the size of the board, in moving in that direction.
I would tend to agree, yeah.
I would, yeah, I think we'd agree that, at this point, whether you go to three or five members, at this point, we would, as we did before, recommend continued delegation and make the statutory changes, and go to the legislature and ask for approval.
As you think about it, we have a budget of a million, $100 million, 27,000 people, a lot of towns our size have gone to town manager forms of government, and...
Right.
That is...
I mean, I guess we're fortunate and unfortunate, you know, we're fortunate that we've got a lot of people, a lot of great people that volunteer their time, and it still works. May not work tremendously well, but it's not totally broken either. The towns that have gone the other route, it was getting to the point where it was just getting to be broken.
Well, we've been very lucky over the years to have participants, both volunteering for committees as well as willing to run for office. So, that's the key, is they have the contribution. Which leads me into the next one, which is the warrant committee. You recall that the DOR report talked about the size and the responsibilities of the warrant committee? Well, the warrant committee, so I met with the warrant committee chairperson on this, and we spoke about the various aspects, and certainly, the warrant committee has done a lot of great work over the years, and I'm a bit biased, having been there as well, as a chairman of that many years ago, but, in terms of, you know, they have helped coordinate, in many cases, the fragmented financial approach we have, and they brought that together. And, without a CFO, the warrant committee has done a great job of actually helping on the budgets, because a CFO, otherwise, would be helping, responsible for preparing the budget and getting it through the town altogether. So, in any case, one of the recommendations was to reduce the size of that, and that's not something we're convinced that this report, you know, makes sense at this point. One of the points in the report was about limitations in terms of members appointed to the committee. In fact, as we looked at this, and I believe there's an opinion that was passed down to me, that, I think, and came where you passed on, John Flynn's opinion regarding that the quorum is defined as the quorum of, right now, the 15-member committee, or whatever number committee there is. It would take a statutory change to change the quorum to be, a quorum is based on the number of members, appointed members, and that's something we think should take place, so, for example, if you have 13 members appointed, and there's two that are still in process...
Right.
The quorum should be based upon seven out of the 13, and not said to say, okay, well, we don't have a quorum, you know, just because we haven't appointed two other members. So, we're looking to come back for, in the future, for the next town, not the DePaul town meeting, the next town meeting, have a statutory recommendation to have a change so that committees are based upon the appointed number of members. So, it's not a major point, but we don't think reducing the size of the committee at this point is a high priority, we think because we're lucky to have all the volunteers we have, and have, lucky to have the work they do.
I think one problem I see with the warrant committee is turnover, and I can understand the practical problem of requiring multiple-year terms on the warrant committee. There are some people that will stay, but there are also people that turn, and it's difficult if you have, you know, 50% of the committee turned over in one year, and it does happen.
The normal process would be that normally, you'd have five out of 15 turning over anyway, so five out of 15 is 33%, so that's the normal progression.
Yeah.
So, it's certainly possible that in a given year, a sixth person leaves, and it's suddenly up to 40%. The other thing is that, again, one of the concepts here of improving the financial management here is to, in fact, be able to provide an assist to the warrant committee, so, provide assistance in terms of having the budget prepared and having the recommendations discussed ahead of time, so hopefully, there'd be, the expectation is that a stronger financial management would provide assistance to the warrant committee, so we can at least help in terms of the number of hours they're contributing to the town.
But, again, if I could chime in here, only because I do a lot of work in the town of Easton, and I follow the politics there, you know, they have a similar population to Milton, 24,000, we have 27, and they have a five-member board, and they have about a $75 million budget, yet their warrant committee meets only four times.
Four times, how often?
Four times before the town meeting.
Really?
That's it. And, what they do is they consolidate, like, all the budgets together, the DPW, police, and fire into one big budget, and you...
One budget out of ten.
And then, you can question it on the floor. But, other than that, it gets approved, there's one budget.
We had that discussion at our most recent meeting about these articles that were proposed to be consolidated, and we haven't actually voted it, but our concern is that, effectively, would be limiting debate, if you will, and limiting the opportunity for town meeting members and the public to actually understand a budget. So, you occasionally have people complaining that the school budget goes through too fast, if you suddenly take the school budget concept and say, we're going to put all the budgets into one budget...
Actually, let me correct myself, the school budget is separate.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, so, in any case, there is a concern within our committee about limiting the opportunity for residents, or actually, it's town meeting members, but obviously, the public reading the warrant to understand what's going on, but that was one of the DOR recommendations, to consolidate some of the articles. You know, as I said, we had an interesting debate at the last meeting about that. So, the DOR recommendations, not easily adopted by our committee, we challenge the bases of them, and this is one that wasn't as simple as the report would lead you to believe. And, that's interesting that Easton does it, but certainly, we're looking at it.
Okay.
In terms of trying to approve town meeting. And, that actually gets into the fourth recommendation, which was, the DOR recommended holding a preliminary annual town meeting, and we, again, we bounce that around. We are, in fact, looking, I do believe, you know, the most recent, you know, rules that town moderator Brian Walsh put into place helped the last town meeting. And, we're also, at this point, researching the frequency that towns are having town meetings, the number of meetings, and it's surprising what the research shows, number of towns have a greater number. We're also looking at how often during a week they meet. As you know, we have a history of meeting three times a week, that's not the pattern we're seeing. So, we're looking at trying to, the goal here is to improve the attendance, because the attendance, we have those numbers from the most recent town meeting, and it continues on night four, it'd be much different than it is on night one, which is what I expected when I reported on the first night. So, again, we're looking for ways to, again, maintain good attendance and maintain, you know, flexibility in the schedule. We're looking at even the starting time. We look, you know, that's, we, the poll included what the starting times were, and that's not simple, as people have, at six o'clock at night, it is, for example, very hard for people to get out of work or to get anywhere with the traffic we have. So, that's, again, none of these are simple, so, saying, starting at six or 6:30, not so simple, not so simple. But, we've, given that poll and the research that our committee's done, has identified what other towns are doing in that. And, all this is towards the goal of improving town meeting. Strength in the audit committee, that one is, I know, that's been on a starved-and-starved basis, and I'll tell you, first of all, that the recommendation of the DOR is thorough. We think this is a more comprehensive one than the last, you know, effort we were going to try to do in terms of back in the fall of last year. And, let me just, again, the key points here is that the committee would be separated from the Board of Selectmen. So, in fact, when I was on the board, it looked like the audit committee, even though there was an audit committee, it looked like the audit partners, if you will, the audit firm was reporting to the board. Well, in fact, you know, the committee itself is appointed by the moderator, but in terms of the hiring and the overseeing of the selection of the auditor, all that would be done by the committee, and the committee would, in fact, be following up in terms of the actual review and understanding of the reports and the management of the comments and the follow-up. Frankly, if you go into this DOR report, our committee does not have comments on sections 18 through 32, most of which are financial recommendations that I would hope that the future audit committee will follow up on, because there are recommendations here that need to be implemented, some are in the process of being implemented, some have been out there for a couple of years, are stronger. We really believe in strengthening the existing committee, and we support all of the recommendations on the DOR, which was, the committee would be establishing, developing a scope of audit services and working with the town administrator for finance, which is the so-called CFO. They would define the service needs the town expects, so, it's not reporting to the assistant town administrator, but it is working with that CFO to define what the scope is. The committee itself oversees the selection of the auditor with an RFP, and reviews and understands the reports, and form an opinion and performance on the performance of the auditor. And, the key thing at the end is to monitor the progress of the corrective action plans, and making sure all the departments are following up, and if they are following up, what do they need for resources to complete the follow-up? So, again, with the, with the understanding that, on page 12, we're in support of that recommendation, and we're just looking at some final pieces in terms of trying to tie it into the stronger CFO, and the issue is, you know, what pieces, and how do we tie all that into a stronger finance role?
Rick, on that, we've held off on submitting, or resubmitting, an article for the audit committee until maybe the government study could come in with more of a global financial recommendation. Is that still what your idea is?
Yes, and the timeframe, when you look at it, your warrant closes, I believe, probably in the first week of January, and as a result, there isn't much, you know, there's really only about three months, four months here left, so, the intent is to have that included in your warrant for January?
Mm-hmm, good.
Okay, in terms of, next recommendation in the DOR we had was to explore further opportunities to consolidate municipal operations, and we're revisiting that topic. We did meet 18 months ago with the boards and directors in the cemetery and parks and the DPW, but, you know, we've actually, think that makes sense to go back to that and look at the model again, and also, with the success of the Consolidated Facilities Department, it makes sense to try to see what overlaps there are and where we can have some efficiencies and improvements. Certainly, there are other towns that are doing it differently than we are, and so, that is an area we're undertaking right now, again. The other one was, after this, was reconstitute the Technology Committee. Well, that was in combination with the RFP, and it's my understanding, I haven't seen it, but I understand it is a draft, RFP in process.
Yes.
The committee is very happy about that, so, we're happy to see that going out there, and we also think that the appointment of a committee should be done, but it's not dependent upon the RFP, so that the committee would assist this board and the town administrator in terms of the process. So, we think, there was a committee years ago that was sort of not really active, if you will, but we think there's plenty of qualified people in the town that can assist this committee, and I reference back to, again, the recommendations we had, in terms of, like, hopefully, and again, I haven't seen the RFP, but I understand that there is a need for, for example, a comprehensive inventory and assessment of existing technology, whether that's going to be done by the consultant or by the staff, I'm not sure that's the case, but certainly, an assessment of each department's current and future technologies needs, and identify the challenges and emerging issues and potential solutions, that hopefully is in the scope of the consultant.
That is, that is in the scope.
Perfect.
Emery's going to send you the draft, Rick.
So, we just, we're really pleased to see this, and we keep, again, the ultimate product should be this three-year strategic plan based upon all of the above elements, and include a technology vision and a mission for the town and the Milton schools, so that's critical. And, the schools, of course, is not dictating the academic piece, so it's staying away from academic, it's really the operational administrative side.
Right.
So, if I go into one of the, the other one was the DOR recommended a comprehensive review of the town bylaws, and we are in favor of that, we think that makes a lot of sense. The general bylaws are difficult and best to understand, they need a codification, so we think we need to get that going, there should be a bylaw review committee, there are many qualified attorneys or laypersons in town that certainly could assist in that process, but we think that is long overdue.
I agree.
And, on that note, Rick, if you think a bylaw review committee should be appointed, does the committee have any view of whether that should be a selectman-appointed committee versus a moderator-appointed committee that we submitted a warrant article for?
We didn't get into the ownership of that.
Okay.
I can certainly have that discussion at our next meeting, if you want.
Wouldn't hurt, yeah.
It was actually done in the school committee a couple of years ago, and Leroy Walker was on it, he did an amazing job, through he and a couple of other people, so, he'd be one person that I would be looking to put on this committee, if we were to appoint a committee.
We have him tied up on our committee.
Oh, you do?
As well as the school.
Yeah, he's, yeah, he did a great job with the school committee, though.
All right, the next major section gets into the budget and financial plan, and the ninth recommendation in the overall report was to prepare a long-term financial blueprint. We urged that the town get this going quickly, to implement this recommendation in full, three- to five-year plan in writing should be done. If we adopt the role of a CFO, that would be a primary responsibility, a major responsibility of the CFO, to update and prepare that, along with the budget, and this is something that, frankly, we used to have, I was involved in, and I did it back 15 years ago, and it dropped off the map.
Right.
It's in process, no.
It's almost done.
We have a five-year financial plan in process.
Almost done. Formalizing, well, we're formalizing the assumptions that we have kind of plugged in, but, so, but, yeah, it should be ready to go in a couple of weeks.
That'd be great. The tenth recommendation was to establish enterprise funds and develop a written indirect cost policy. We support this, and I know the board has asked Amy to join, I guess, meet with a consultant, is that what you're doing?
We have two articles for October.
Right, so, we think that should be done. The eleventh goal was to, recommendation was to formalize pilot agreements, and, as you know, our committee recommended the appointment of a pilot committee, and one of our members, Rob Gattnick, went over that committee, so, hopefully, that's underway, I just haven't had a chance to meet with Rob recently.
It is, yeah, and actually, on that committee as well, and I'll be reporting on it shortly.
Good. The twelfth goal was to continue the efforts to build reserves, and that absolutely makes sense, that's critical for getting in the favorable light of the rating agencies, and it's critical for just operating needs of the town, especially when tough times will cyclically occur. The eleventh, let's see, the thirteenth recommendation was to explore what's called another post-employment benefits trust option. That is one we didn't think was as simple as the DOR suggested. You know, as you know, we have a stabilization fund with a small amount of money, $135,000, and it, we think that, it's good to put aside money, we're in favor of that, but whether that particular trust fund is the right option versus a stabilization fund is something that we think, in theory, the CFO should be studying and making recommendations on.
And, that is something that the town administrator and the town accountant together have been looking into.
Right.
And, it'll probably take a little longer to do some of the research on that, given everything we've got pending right now, but it's in process.
And, that's one, again, with the trust option, it sounds like it's an easy one, it's recommended by the DOR, but we ought to check the curveballs in that, and make sure that, whether it's a stabilization fund, which we currently are doing, versus the trust fund...
The trust fund's permanent, but...
Yeah, that's some of the issues here, you want to be sure that you have the ability to, for the right reasons, for the reasons that, for post-retirement... that post-retirement benefits, but at least the ability to access the funds at the time that you need to pay the bills for the retired.
Yeah, that, that you would have, and the funding of it is optional, obviously, even once you establish it, but, but it's still, I mean, it's, it is permanent. You can't get it back out.
Key thing is putting aside money. I mean, that's the, I mean, I was on the Pension Reserve Committee many years ago, and the Pension Reserve Fund is probably in the seventy percent, seventy-five percentile. And we've got to get this one up, and we really need to fund this as soon as we complete funding the Pension Reserve Fund.
Right.
The revising the annual town meeting was the next recommendation. Overall, we're in favor of this. We do think sometimes the warrant does get a little too complex. We're not ready to go to the simplified one budget article, but, and we think, you know, this obviously requires close coordination between the Town Administrator and the Warrant Committee Chairman. And so we don't have, you know, the answer. We're not, you know, we're not there as to what the, all the improvements are, but we just, we're very cautious about consolidating into the so-called single omnibus budget. The fifteenth recommendation was to review the Warrant Committee Reserve Fund transfers, and that is operational. We don't see that as in the purview of our committee. This is getting into, some of these recommendations that the DOR recommended were operational issues, in some cases tactical, not strategic. And so the committee is not going to get into such things as consider the compensated absence piece reserve. That's, that could be part of a long-term plan, but it's certainly not in terms of immediate plans or the priorities that we talked about earlier in this meeting. There was, again, a number of smaller items, and the committee just is not going to focus on those. So that's basically, at this point, where we are. I think really, I think I've covered the major pieces of the Department of, Department Revenue Report as well as some of the areas that we're covering. So if you have any feedback after the meeting or, you know, the next few weeks.
I have a lot on your plate. Your committee's pretty busy.
So anything you, comments or feedback?
I've got to say, I mean, you, you are doing a thorough job, and, and it is appreciated. And I know how difficult it is, you know, because it's, you know, every time, for every decision you make, there's a, there's a, you know, for every action, there's a reaction and.
The other comment related to that is that everybody wants change, and that's the reason the committee was created, but nobody wants change when it comes directly near them.
Exactly, yeah.
Running into some of that. There's a resistance to, you know, everything is working perfectly in every area. Nothing needs to change, and, you know, life's changing.
Right. I mean, I keep saying that, you know, the one thing that may bring about that change is somewhat of these years, when we need that override, it's not going to happen, and then, you know, change hits us whether you want it or not.
I think, you know, everyone at this table, as well as our committee, is all aiming in the right direction, which is to provide the best for the residents of the town in terms of both services and cost of services and delivery.
Right.
And Milton is a town where change comes slowly. We all know that. So efforts to modernize and move forward a little bit on some of these issues are, are going to be challenging. Some of the details will be challenging, depending on what some of the recommendations are that come out of your committee, Rick, but, but they're all important issues. And I, I think that, going back just to this Board, the role of the Town Administrator, really making it, modernizing it so that it's not just, I mean, every member on this current Board, and certainly you, Rick, when you were on the Board and a lot of other people, you know, we all have full-time day jobs that are extremely busy day jobs. And it's, it's one thing to be on a Board where you have a strong town manager who has the authority to do, and for the general public watching, when we say strong town manager, we're talking about the form of the role. We're not talking about any individual who's served in this, at any time over the years. Because, you know, we have a great Town Administrator, I think, but the charter and the way the system is set up requires a lot of things to be voted and decided and signed by this Board, not by the Town Administrator unless we can delegate it. So I think moving in the direction of a town manager is really, is really a key thing for us to be focusing on.
I agree.
Rick, would your committee be willing to just take a look at, you and I talked about this on the phone, but take a look at the composition of the Capital Improvement Planning Committee? It's a committee where we have a lot of Boards represented, and we only have two members of the general public appointed. And I remember when I was on the Government Study Committee, we did have someone come in and talk about whether the residents who were appointed to that committee should have special backgrounds in construction or building, because we've had new schools, the new library, and would it make sense for the, the general public appointees to have certain criteria, qualifications for work experience or a particular background that would gear itself towards development or building. And that was before the committee at the time, and we didn't officially.
Tony Chikello.
Tony Chikello came in and brought that up, and he is, was, is the Chair, was the Chair of the School Building Committee. And at the time, the committee didn't, didn't put forward a recommendation on that, but we also looked at the membership of the committee. And right now, we're in a situation where we have a lot of Boards representing Warrant Committee, this Board, Planning Board. Question is, we have an operating budget that's put together by a fifteen-member committee of residents who aren't serving on any other elected Board or appointed Board, but capital committee is really comprised of Boards, and not all Boards are represented. And that's been an issue over the years, and the question might be, should we rethink? And maybe your committee will come to the conclusion that it's perfect the way it is, but maybe your committee could take a look at that, see what other towns are doing and what, what, what might be the.
So are we looking at the charge, are we looking at the charge, the size and the members?
Yeah, the composition, I think. Well, yeah, I mean, right now, I guess, of concern, you know, there's got to be an article that the library wants representation. So, you know, probably not long that, you know, the Parks are going to want representation and just, you know, so sooner or later, you've got an unwieldy committee, number one. And number two, you've got just a committee of people advocating for their own departments, which intrinsically doesn't seem all that workable. Although granted, we've already got the School Committee on there that clearly, you know, has a vested interest in school projects. And you've got, you know, me on the, from the Selectmen that.
Yeah, but we now have a Consolidated Facilities Director, which we did not at the time that the Capital Improvement Planning Committee was created. So should that, what impact should that have on the composition of the committee? Something to think about.
So is there a chart, an existing charge for the committee? Do you want that looked at as well?
There's a bylaw. Is there a charge for that committee?
Bylaw.
It's governed by bylaw.
All right, we'll get out the bylaw. And look at the composition and size of the committee and the membership.
And I think just to add something to that, over the years, the Capital Planning Committee has become more of a bonding committee than a capital committee, because there are so many, if it's not bonded, it tends to just wind up going through the Warrant Committee in many cases. Although, there aren't an awful lot of capital projects that aren't bonded, but, but.
That's a fairly recent development, though, Tom, isn't it? Because when I was on the Warrant Committee, the, the articles that were coming around at the Capital Committee weren't big bonded items. It was small, a hundred thousand, a hundred fifty thousand dollars of a door on the library, a new windows on a building.
It was coming out of our.
It was small, and it was being funded out of free cash or other operating money. Now, the Capital Committee is focusing on the biggest, the big-ticket projects, and they're all getting bonded. But, but the Capital Committee initially started off looking at smaller ticket items. And probably, it should be looking at both.
Yeah, yeah. I believe it should be.
Probably not the most important issue for your committee. You have a lot of governance and finance issues that are probably a lot more pressing than this one is, but something that might make sense for the Government Study Committee to take a crack at.
I'll bring it back to the committee.
All right. Thank you.
And I want to thank all the members of our committee for all the work, and I always they do, so.
And we, to that point, we have a new member to appoint for you tonight.
Yes, so I will, I'll move to approve the appointment of Philip Matthews, 154 Reedstale Road, to the Town Government Study Committee to serve through November 2014. I'll second that.
Any discussion? And if not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And thank you to Phil for his willingness to serve.
Exactly.
Rick, thanks.
He'll be a great member.
You and the full committee for all your work.
Thanks. Thank you.
Good night.
Night, Rick.
Okay, number eleven is the meeting with Mary Ann Sullivan, the Director of the Council on Aging, regarding the Senior Tax Work Off Program.
Hi, Mary Ann.
Mary Ann.
So I come before you tonight to see if you will approve the Senior Tax Work Off Program. If you approve it for 2015, that will be the tenth year of the program. We started with ten seniors. We now have twenty-five seniors. It is, without a doubt, such a help to the seniors. They struggle so much with the property taxes. I don't have to tell you how many of them are house poor. They come forward. I think you've seen the Town Hall greeters, the people that work in Town Hall. They do an incredible job, and the feedback from the Department Heads is nothing but positive. They have great work ethics. They really take their job seriously. One of the women in the Building Department, who has been nine years doing her job, recently got ill, and she called to see if she could come on the van so she could fulfill her commitment. That's how dedicated they are. Unfortunately, we lost three of them this year. They passed, but they're all in their nineties. And just, you know, incredible. The calls come in, you know, we really, really love it. Are we going to do it this year? There's a little glitch in the time this year, so the program this year would start on January first, 2015. The ninety-three hours, again, would have to be completed by November first, 2015. And the reason I'm before you tonight is we are going to press tomorrow with our September newsletter, so there's a little bit of time we need to get it out there to the public. As we always do, we take new people first. Sometimes people are very excited about it, and then they come in and they say, eh, I don't know, is it worth it? But I will tell you, we've had a lot of phone calls about it. So I think it's a win situation, not only for the seniors, but for the departments that they work for.
Mary Ann, they get paid for this work? Or is it a volunteer?
It's, it's a vol, they're, it's called the Senior Tax Work Off Program, and they have them in, most cities and towns throughout the Commonwealth. What they do is it comes off their tax bill, so it would come off their FY15 tax bill.
At the rate of eight dollars an hour.
At the rate of eight dollars an hour, the minimum. So they work ninety-three hours. There's no, it's not like they, they're given a check. It's a, I don't know the correct terminology, but it comes off their tax bill, less OBR, is that the correct terminology? OBR.
Yep.
So I would say it is, it's much more than, you know, getting some sort of reprieve on their tax bill. It's actually getting out and meeting people as well.
Absolutely. It's a great program, really.
And one of the best things I hear about it, especially this from the Town Hall greeters, that, you know, years ago, I remember coming into Town Hall, and there was a secretary there, maybe I'm the only one in the room who remembers it, but it was really nice. And a lot of the comments that the Senior Tax greeters downstairs say is, people come in and say, wow, it's so nice to see somebody sitting here that smiles and says, good morning, good afternoon, how can I help you? I think, and that goes back to, you know, customer service for the residents. I think it's a, it's a, it's a great opportunity for everybody to get a better feel, so, you know, you're coming to pay that dreaded tax bill, and the lady's saying, well, good morning, here's how, where the Treasurer's office is. We had a lady who worked in the DPW, fabulous. Schools, they help out in the library, Building Department, Board of Health, Library, Senior Center, volunteers to teach computer, you know, so they're, it's really, it's a wonderful opportunity, and, you know, it just helps, it just helps a lot. It helps them. They're struggling. I don't think I need to tell anybody here how difficult it is. A man came in today, he was down at the Assessors' Office, and he came over for some help, and he said he was seventy-nine years old, he lived, he had lived in the town since he was seventeen, and he said, why didn't somebody tell me it was going to be so tough to get old? It really is, they struggle. So a program like this, I can't tell you how beneficial it is and, you know, how, how many people it will help.
I just have two comments, and I'm not suggesting we even change them now, but something we may consider. Number one is, the income threshold is static, and obviously with inflation, and it's awfully close to the eighty percent area median.
Household median.
Yeah, would it make sense, rather than having a static number, to target it to eighty percent of area median or something like that, so that as inflation moves, it moves a little bit too? And then the second comment would be the eight dollars an hour. I don't know if this, they are subject to minimum wage laws, but again, we're at a static number, where minimum wage.
It goes up, if the minimum wage goes up.
It is targeted at minimum wage.
There's talk that, you know, the minimum wage is going up. I think it's hit to eleven dollars, so.
There's talk of, I don't know if they actually will, but yeah.
Do you rewrite the guidelines every year?
No.
Just want to change like that.
This year, we changed it because of the dates and because of the OBR funding that comes out of it. But other than that, the guidelines have remained the same. Would certainly be open to, you know, working with you if you think it's something that could change.
Yeah, that, that would be the only two that I could see.
I have to say, most of the seniors who do apply fall in the guidelines. It's very rare, maybe in nine years, there's been five people who are over income.
Yeah, and when you've got a limited number of slots, it probably isn't a huge issue, I understand, but.
Okay. Well, I'll make a motion to approve the Senior Tax Work Off Program from calendar year 2015.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
All right, thank you very much.
Thanks, Mary Ann. All right, Joe and Toby, I know you've been waiting for a while.
Patiently.
Very patiently, so thank you for your, thank you for your patience. Item twelve is a discussion of the water and sewer rates for 2015 with our DPW Director, Joe Lynch, and Toby Feder. Did you get that right from Woodard and Curran?
If you could, what I'm passing out is a hard copy of the report that we've circulated to, to you all earlier. This is just for your record, I've also made them available to the press to help them follow along as we dive into this very oftentimes complicated and convoluted conversation. And we'll try to keep it as simple as we can. I think I want to preface this presentation by first saying that the, this time of year, every year, is when the Town Selectmen, as its Water and Sewer Commissioners, vote to set the water and sewer rates for the coming year. And my hope is at the end of the discussion this evening that such a vote takes place. If it, if there's still more information that needs to be had, or if there's more digestion that you folks need to do, I'm prepared to come back next Tuesday night if necessary. But on that evening, we, we would be at a deadline from which the rate would have to be set in order to get our water and sewer bills out on time. So in that light, we've embarked upon this year's rate-setting analysis, much like we've done in years past, following the exact same analytical protocol. Some of this is, you've said it on various meetings, so this is not news to the Board and to those folks at home who've followed along as well. What we've done differently this year, though, is we, we were charged with having to understand what some of the public input, some public concerns might be with regards to how we set our rates and what the tier system entailed. And in doing that, we conducted a public forum back in, in early July and gathered that input, and we got some follow-up input from, from the Board of Selectmen itself. And what it really boiled right down to is that, you know, there's, there's a lot to be said about the water conservation process or the benefits of having a multi-tier on escalating rate at the highest tier as a way of allowing people use less water. But in the end of the day, we still set the rates based on our sales, which is based on need for revenue, based on the cost of, the direct cost of carrying out the business as well as the indirect cost of carrying out each of those businesses. And I say businesses, water unto itself and sewer unto itself. So what came out of this year's rate report was looking at the, holding our analysis as we have since the multi-tier system went in place, which is simply looking at the three-tier, excuse me, four tiers. And then also included in the report this year for the first time is the results of the public input that we got. And that boiled down to perceived inequity. And analytically, it is an inequity with regards to the way multi-tenant, multi-tenant facilities, particularly the larger facilities, have all their water measured through a single meter and billed out through that single meter, which inevitably gets them at the highest tier every single time, regardless of the number of units. What we've done is, you know, we've polled other communities. I put out a survey to all the MWA communities and tried to get a feel for what other communities are doing, most aren't doing anything with regards to multi families, some do. But what, those that do, they recognize that those multi-unit facilities could either have individual meters, which we don't advocate because of the, the maintenance and the concerns and the concerns with physical plumbing changes some of these buildings might need. So what we then endeavored to look at was taking all of the multi-unit buildings, five units and more, so not including one, two, or three, or four units, one's not a multi, two, three, or four units, not considering those because they typically would come into those lower tiers, but looking at only those five units and greater, and recognizing that there's six or seven, you know, total facilities townwide that would have to have all these bills manually read, manually calculated, manually issued, and then tracked into the system. And just the owner's undertaking of taking on, and let me get the real, the actual number for you, which is, which is quite large. Five, yeah, there are eight unit, eight buildings that have five units or more in total, or greater than, greater than five. There's one building that has five units exactly. And then it quickly escalates, you know, three family units, there are 20, and then two family units, there are 666. So it becomes completely unwieldy to take that on. So, having done that, we were then tasked through this board to understand a couple of things. One is what benefit would some of the facilities get? And we've looked at each of the target eligible facilities and we analyzed that. The one that came up during the public forum was 88 Worf Street, the ones that brought it to our attention years ago, and have we worked towards that. And I am able to report what sorts of savings we would.
Can I just ask one quick question? When you say five or more, do you mean five or more condominiums, not apartments?
Oh, it would be apartments as well.
Why would you put apartments in there?
Not sure we can distinguish, distinguish the form of ownership from, at one time or another. The, like the Unquity House, that's a, those are rental units. Winter Valley are rental units. It's also a targeted elderly population. But on the new Milton Hill House that's under construction, actually nearing completion, those are apartments. But there are others, like 88 Worf, 36 Central, that are owned as condominiums individually, but still needed exactly the same way.
I understand that, but I can understand giving a reprieve to, we'll say, 88 Worf or to 36 Central because they're condominiums. But in an apartment building, I mean, it's, it's one owner, and he's got to pay the top tier for everybody that's living in the building. It's not individual owners.
Right, but their rents are still either directly or indirectly based upon the costs. And certainly, you're pushing higher costs to that building owner. That's just going to flow down to the extent that people still are residents of the town. I mean, they may not be homeowners, but they're still residents. They're still, they still can vote, they can still, their kids go to school here. I mean, they're, they're residents.
I don't, I'm sorry, Tom, if you.
No, go ahead.
If that was a charge that was given to us, it wasn't clear to me that we would distinguish apartments versus condominiums. So we didn't look at it that way, and I apologize if that's what you were hoping, I, because I didn't do that. Back, and I don't have the precise date, Toby probably knows, probably knows chapter and verse, the citation of state law, but it used to be prohibited to pass your water and sewer bills on, actually water bills, sewer, you're always good. You could not pass the water bills on to your tenants in the past. But a change in the, in the state law, six, seven, eight years ago, thereabouts, allows that. So in many instances, these, these bills are in fact being passed on.
Directly.
Directly to the, to the tenants, through some arithmetical formula that they, that the landlord does on his own, that they're entitled to do that. So back prior to that law changing, there was a prohibition to let that happen. And as a result, the only way to, to adjust would be looking at annual rental adjustments to, if the water consumption goes up, I just simply have to charge more rent the next year. But now with the state law, they can pass those directly through.
You just taught me something. I didn't know that.
It may be rules in some towns that, actually it's state law. I don't believe even a local bylaw could pass that if it's an allowance to do it.
It's an allowance to do it, not a mandate.
Not a mandate.
You find differing practices throughout the state. But there's definitely places where they push the bills through to the actual tenants.
And that's, well, in my career, it's relatively recent, you know, six, seven years ago is when that, that change occurred.
I can come back to that anyway, but I do have more to say on that.
So we did, I'm sorry, we did look at apartments as well as condominiums, you know, multi-unit facilities regardless of the form of ownership. The, the 88 Worf Street were the most vocal and bring it to our attention, they were also the most vocal during the public forum. And I believe the board of, the entire Board of Selectmen were in attendance at that forum and heard that firsthand.
Yes.
One of the things that was intriguing that was stated during that forum, and it is in fact true, is that in many of these multi-unit facilities, you know, older, older folks who have alternative housing situations where part of the year, they're, they're able to go away to a beach house in the summertime, or perhaps go, go south to warmer climates in the wintertime. And as a result, you know, their units go vacant during the year. And that's why some of the communities who in fact consider relaxation of some sort of tier arrangement, look at this half adjustment versus full, versus full adjustment that we spoke of the last time I was here. And I know there was some confusion on that. But simply thought of is that if we were to take the total number of units, gallons, if you will, of water through a single meter and divide it by the number of units in that building, that would be the full adjustment proposal that's presented. It's been presented in the, in the technical summary, and it's, it's been presented in the rate analysis report. But what that would do is on those units that were in fact vacant for many parts of the year, using zero water, the town would typically still be, if we were billing them as individual, single-family homes, would still be getting the minimum reading even though they're vacant. So to offset that is, half adjustment is oftentimes considered. So what we did is exactly prepared a second analysis and reported the potential savings to each of those buildings on a half adjustment and commensurate rate impact should the board consider that. So that's the background on that. To put it in, in simple terms, and I'm not trying to jump into the report, because we'll get into that in due time, but the 88 Worf Street question being raised was they felt there was an inequity of about, about $18,000 a year, that they were all being overcharged. And when we do our half adjustment, half rate adjustment, it is in fact within, all things equal FY14 rates, just simply allowing a half rate adjustment, we are within $21 of their projected savings that they were looking to get. So we, I'm astonished that their analysis is that good and that we're able to even, even get anywhere near that. So that, that is what their benefit would be. It trickles down, and these are, again, these are raw numbers, they're rounded to the nearest thousand. Winter Valley as a whole, which is many multiple buildings up there, has $31,000 potential savings at a half adjustment. Unquity House, $34,000. Milton Hill House, which is 36 Elliott, would be $10,000. That does not include the new apartment building, since we have no readings on them. Central Avenue condominium would be about $5,000 a year savings. Fuller Village, which is the Blue Hill, Phase 1, if you will.
Is that 36 Central?
36 Central would be $5,000 per year. Fuller Village could potentially save $23,000 a year. And Fuller Village Brush Hill, the newer one, would be $34,000. Collectively, half adjustment would result in about $155,000, excuse me, $155,000 per year in lost revenue, which would need to be made up across the other rate tiers. And we've given, you know, we've issued to you the technical memo that I think you've all had a chance to read. And those numbers are restated within the, the report here, the rate recommendation report. But what that boils down to is, is if we do lean towards a half adjustment, the average two-person household, again, all things assuming equal to the FY14 rates, would have paid a total increase of $3.40 a year for the water and sewer combined. A four-person household would be $9.50 per year total for water and sewer combined. And a five-person household would pay more, like $18.10 per year.
This is on the half?
That's a half. That's the half adjustment.
And the half adjustment. And by paying that much more across all of the tiers, all the, all the tiers, we would recoup $155,000 savings that would be realized by those other multi-tier units. So that's, that's the, that's the logic of the approach that we use. That's the result of that syst, of that protocol that we followed coming through. We could pause here and take some questions if you wish on those before we delve into the rate analysis itself. Maybe that makes sense.
Sure. Why don't, why don't we do that? Any questions?
Of your, so how many condominium buildings and how many apartment buildings in the, in the five, in the six buildings that you've identified? 88 Worf is a condo.
We didn't, we didn't analyze it, but I, just by address, perhaps, I think I can figure it out. 88 Worf is.
36 Central.
Winter Valley is not. Unquity House is not. Milton Hill House is not. 36 Central is. Fuller Village 1 and 2 are not. So really, the only condominium is 36 Central out of the ones.
Fuller Village is a bit of a quasi, it's a life lease, so it's elements of both rental and ownership. It's, it's a different, different animal, but.
Yeah.
But yeah, but it's, so it sounds like you're saying, Joe, two, two condominium buildings and the rest are apartments or?
36 Central, 88 Worf.
Those two, right?
Condos, yeah.
I do want to be careful to point out when I speak of Fuller Village Brush Hill, Phase 1, there's really even two aspects within that, that project by itself, and those are the bungalows out back, the smaller, at grade units.
Those are separately made.
Those are already individually needed, so that they're not included. It's only the large building with the central core and the two wings off.
But everybody does have a life leave, a life lease at Fuller.
And the, Tom, maybe Katie knows, well, Unquity House and, are they nonprofit organizations?
They're both nonprofits.
They're both nonprofits. Well, that makes a difference. Because I was saying, if they were landlords and they're benefiting from us giving a reduction, yet the taxpayer has to make it up. I wouldn't, I didn't think that was fair. But if they're nonprofit organizations and they're getting a benefit by having their water rates reduced, well, I'm okay with that.
Yeah, but, and again, I mean, they're both taxpayers. I mean, the owner of the apartment building is a taxpayer in the town too.
I understand, but by, by us reducing the water rate, he's getting extra money in his pocket every month at the expense of the rest of the taxpayers in town. That's all I'm saying, as an apartment building owner.
Right, I mean, he's either doing that or he's got the luxury to slightly reduce the rent because he's got reduced costs. I mean, you know, it's, no matter which way you want to look at it, but.
So we're basically giving a benefit to 50 Elliott Street, which is the new apartment building. He's a, it's a private landlord. We're giving a good benefit to him at the expense of the taxpayers in town. Would that be correct?
Well, ratepayers rather than taxpayers. I mean, that's
Ratepayers.
a minor point, but, but at one of our previous meetings, Tom really made that point about equity between homeowners and renters. And, you know, I think that's why Joe and Toby didn't make that distinction, which, which does, is, to me, it's more of a fairness issue, not, not considering condos or homeowners, but the issue raised by 88 Worf, that they, they're just, and for several years, they've been paying
I get that, and I'm, I'm in favor of that.
water bills. And the question is, how do we, how do we balance it out? I'm not sure I would draw that distinction between the homeowners and the renters. Just, just, I guess for the reasons you've said, already said, Tom.
Yeah.
Because they're all taxpayer, they're all residents, they're all taxpayers, whether they're, you know, whether they're paying taxes indirectly or directly.
I'm okay with the nonprofits, but I am saying the likes of 50 Elliott Street, yes, he's, he's one taxpayer in town. And he's getting a benefit by having his water rates reduced to tier two or whatever it is. Yet the difference has to be made up by the rest of the ratepayers in town, and he's a, he's a private property owner. He's, he's going to benefit from it unless he passes our savings onto the renters.
It would be an indirect benefit to the renters.
Then to be a benefit to the renters. I just wanted to make that distinction, make that, you know, I get, I get the, I understand why 88 Worf should, should get it. There's 71 different owners there. And they're all individual taxpayers.
Dennis, just on your, your point on 36 Elliott, Milton Hill House, not the new building, but the, the existing.
50 Elliott, yeah.
The new building's 50, but, which isn't built, we don't have any consumption data. But on 36, we do have years of consumption data. Doing a full adjustment, they would in fact become mostly a tier two customer. But the half adjustment, they would only become a tier, they would become a tier three customer instead of what was always been a tier four customer. So they would reduce a tier. The lost revenue on that, that Elliott Street location would be, if we went to the half adjustment for that one building, would be about $10,400 per year versus what they're, what we're currently collecting. If we went to the full adjustment, that's, that loss would be $14,350 a year.
Joe, the impact on the single-family homeowners is, the numbers that you've given us now are lower than what they were when you met with us previously. Maybe you could just speak to that briefly?
Yes, yes. We had, we had some issues with the database, the assessors' database, and how it was reporting on the multi-unit properties. And secondary is when we went into the rate setting analysis, we also realized that arithmetically, that some of those tiers, some of that lost revenue was in fact, some of these units themselves were going to become lower tiered ratepayers, so they, they would be paying a little more back into the system again. So it was still those two things that made those numbers change. I don't know if you want me to quote what the old numbers were that were confusing, or just re-quote what we think the numbers now are for.
Let's just focus on the correct numbers.
Yes, yeah.
So that's what I, I had said that in the beginning, but I'll, so the impact, if we were to consider the full adjustment, which I, I don't recommend, and I'll say that in so many words, would be a two-person household would be $5.40 per year for water and sewer. A four-person household would be $15.50 per year for water and sewer. And a five-person household would be $29.75 per year. If we did the half adjustment, that two-person household increase would be $3.40 per year, $9.50 for a four-person household, and $18.10 for a five-person household. Now, one thing I, that's gone unstated, first of all, these are, they're relatively low numbers. I don't want to diminish the importance of any money on a person who may be on fixed income and, you know, struggling to make ends meet as it is, and, and it may be the perception that this burden is shifting from a higher class of, of, of customer to a different class of customer. But nonetheless, there, these, these are relatively low numbers. They are lower than what I reported at the last meeting through that error that we, that I point out. The secondary thing that people might find some comfort with is, is all of these other lower-rate tier payers have actually been benefiting, and I don't want to say that with emphasis, but they've been receiving some benefit by virtue of the fact that these other units, if you believe, is inequitable, have in fact been subsidizing their rates for all these years as well. So even the shift back down really puts it back to, if we believe in the inequity, puts it back to equal ground.
I got a question, and maybe you don't even know the answer, but some of these multi-unit buildings, I assume that some of them have lawns and sprinkler systems and whatnot. Are they all attached to the same meter?
No, no. Most, most of these larger facilities have their own separate metering for the, for the outside lawn sprinklers, and their fire protection's not needed at all. And they also don't use any one, God forbid.
Right, yeah. Okay, all right.
So do we want to have any, do you want to go on to, are you looking for a position from us on this before you go on to the actual rates? I guess that would be helpful to your next step, Joe.
Rather than, sure. Rather than restating it as we talk about the rate analysis, you know, if the preference is to, maybe you don't have a preference right now, but if it's to lean towards the half adjustment or the full adjustment, I'd like to know that clearly. Did we miss something by not considering condominium ownership versus multifamily res, rental tenancy? That sort of feedback, I think we need to resolve right now to make this rate analysis report make more sense and be more, more concise in presentation.
I would be leaning towards the, the half adjustment, and I think we should include the, I don't think there's any distinction between rental and condo. I don't think there should be.
Yeah, I, I would agree with that. And it seems that the half adjustment is really the right one, because the full adjustment would give too much of a benefit to, as you said, Joe, to the, someone who's away for, I guess the equivalent, it would be the equivalent of a single-family homeowner not getting a minimum bill for a certain quarter if they were not, if they were out of town for a winter or a summer period.
You'd be, you'd be spreading that, that zero usage over, over multiple. So, you know, it wouldn't.
So the half adjustment seems fairer than the full adjustment.
Joe, I did have one question. I think I asked you this question when you talked to me earlier. The, the two, three, and four bedroom units that we're not considering here, apparently some of those are, do have multiple meters and others don't, is that?
That is true. Particularly with the fewer number of units in a building, you know, the plumbing is just much simpler.
Sure.
So those tenants, those landlords, or even those two-family condominium So those tenants, those landlords, or even those two-family condominium units have already been broken out into separate meters to begin with. So they are already getting the benefit of single metering, if you will.
And does the town have a policy as to, or regulation as to that or not? I mean, in other words, if any two-family wanted to, could they convert to multiple meters?
Properly isolated plumbing, that would be...
But that's their problem.
That is their problem. They'd have to have, you know, separate inaccurate plumbing to divide units.
Right, but if they wanted to, could they, under our current regulations, convert?
That is correct. That is, yes, so that's, thank you for making that distinction. It's, given the plumbing configurations of the larger facilities, it's unwieldy and mechanically almost impossible, or certainly infeasible, to do that. Yet on the smaller units, it's much more feasible, particularly on the two families, and they could do that, and they could commit to do that.
Okay.
And Joe, this, if we were to go to a half-adjustment system, this would put some administrative burden on your department, because it would mean, what's the best way to describe it? Getting a calculation for a building, but then someone in your office would do a manual calculation, that you talked about that the last time, so...
I was very cognizant of that. So if we are thinking that the divide is five units and above.
Right.
That's currently, subject to change, that's currently nine facilities in town. Some of these Forty Bs might very well be something that happens on, but there are nine. That, there is an increased administrative burden, but it's something that we could still continue to support.
But with that nine, or even if it's 10, or 11, or 12 at some point, is that manageable for your department?
Yes.
Actually, that's a good point you brought up. What about the future Forty Bs? Is that going to be one meter or is it going to be multiple meters?
From a metering perspective, we want to, we want, that actually came up during the public forum, where Wall Street folks were talking about potentially metering separately. With the, once you get inside a building, what happens in that, we have, the town water department has no control with isolation of plumbing. They can tap off, they can, things can happen that could be happening inside the meter, or, excuse me, outside the meter, and we never would capture that water consumption, we would never see it. So we would continue to want to have those large facilities read through a single right-sized meter, meaning properly sized to reflect the accuracy of flows at low flow and at high flow, usually a compa meter or a mag meter. So we would continue to want that to happen on the larger facility, so probably take regulation change to require that, but right now, that has been the policy, and we would continue to live by it. Five units in a quarter, they have to have a single master meter.
At what tier? At what, like, so if the Henry's Building is fifty-seven units, what tier are they going to be at?
They, what would be what tier? They would be a single master meter, divided, the flow through it in any quarter divided by two, because we're looking at a half adjustment, and then that number divided by the number of units.
Half adjustment, okay.
Calculates the calculated value in dollars at tier, then you add all, multiply that end product by the number of units again, and that's the bill that's issued to a single entity.
But they would automatically get the half adjustment going forward?
That's correct.
Okay.
So what's...
It doesn't, I'm sorry, it doesn't change the impact any more than what we've already talked about, because we're talking about a change of people who will build at the higher tier suddenly coming down. New unit was never up there to begin with, so that cost doesn't necessarily get, doesn't get passed on to the lower customer.
No, in fact, what happened initially is theoretically, when a new unit like that comes on, you're going to have more water usage than you had before, all things being equal. MWRA billing won't catch up with that for eighteen months, so in those, in that first eighteen-month period, you're going to be billing more units of water at a rate. So theoretically, the rates go down for a period of time, but then you get a spike once they catch up with it.
You've just made a perfect case of why the enterprise system is absolutely needed to be in place. It helps smooth that sort of peak out.
So what's the sense of the board? Do we want to take a vote on the half-adjustment, full-adjustment current system, and then let Joe go on to his rate presentation?
Yeah, that probably makes sense, because that way you're not going to confuse people talking about multiple alternatives.
And in any event, we have to, if not tonight, we have to decide it by next Tuesday, so...
I'll move that we consider going forward the half, the half-rate adjustment for multiple units, for five or more units.
Half adjustment, yeah, I'll second that.
Okay, so motions are made in second. Any discussion on the half-adjustment approach? Then all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
Well, thank you very much. That was excellent, excellent effort we've gone through this past spring and fall, this spring and summer to understand this for the people who've been concerned about that.
And we should say, Joe, too, to the credit of the Eighty-eight Warf Condo Association that's been pushing this issue for a while, they were the ones making the case, but it's benefiting all of the other multifamilies as well. So they raised it as an equitable issue some time ago, and it seems that they were right, because this is a pretty big impact on them and on the others.
So the next product is the FY15 Water and Sewer Rate Analysis and Recommendation Report. It does bear a date at the bottom of August 7th, 2015. That's a scribbled error that I made and didn't catch, but my brain was thinking FY15, and fifteen got typed. So, but we will, just for the record, we'll republish that with a fourteen date, so it ends up on a report, you know, in the permanent record with an accurate date on So with that in place, the report does present all three tiers, but let me encapsulate the discussion by simply saying that we have costs to run the water system. They're direct costs, things like our assessment from the MWRA, our labor and our equipment costs in various projects and repairs that get done. Then we have indirect costs, which is a portion of the accounting department, a portion of the treasury department, a portion of the employee benefits. They're methodically laid out in a document that we've used as a policy, so it doesn't change much from year to year, but it looks at a percentage of the health insurance costs, for example, of the whole, as it's represented by those number of employees who work in the water department or the sewer department. That's how the indirects are calculated. Then we look at the other costs, such as, you know, our capital work that we do every year for the water main replacement, and then the debt service to pay off various notes and bonds on those types of repairs. So on the water side, it costs us, in FY15, the projected cost is $5,470,000 to run the department and to recapture those costs that would need to be recaptured through rates and revenues generated from those rates. So the premise of this is to look at all of your revenue streams, and what we do is we have some inspections and some testing that we do, and that's that 171. I'm looking at page three, by the way, if you're looking to follow along. I apologize for not saying that upfront. We have $171,500 in other non-rate revenue that we generate in the water department, meaning that we need to raise the $5,299,450 through the rates. And it's that number that Toby and his crew of economists and analysts run through the calculation every year and do it on a projection of sales. Antonio and Toby will speak to that in more detail in a moment. The exact same methodology with the sewer, but those numbers are, it costs us $7,215,146 per year in FY15 to run the sewer department. We generate $202,500, $202,500 in non-rate-based revenue, needing us to raise $7,012,647, which has to be supported directly by the rates that were analyzed. Those numbers include the MWRA preliminary assessment numbers, which, if you remember, at town meeting, is the only number that's available. The final assessment doesn't typically come out until well after town meetings are over, and typically that comes out just before the end of the fiscal year. This year, it did come out on June 30th. The difference this year being compared to last is that the preliminary assessment and the final assessment are almost dead on. So in years past, sometimes we felt it necessary to go back at fall town meeting.
Recalculate.
To recalculate and lower the appropriation, not necessary this year. So we're basing our numbers on the preliminary assessment, which are closing up. Now, the other thing I want to talk about, and before we get right into the analysis, is that for the past couple of years, we found it necessary to pledge some use of fund balance, surplus monies in the water sewer accounts that sit on account, to pledge them towards revenue. And by doing so, we could keep the rates, throttle them down and keep them reasonable in any given year. This year, that's not necessary. I think I reported out that our assessments from the MWRA were very, very favorable. Through a lot of hard work that the town has done, it's through a lot of work from the accounting perspective of how we're running our business, and it's also based on some very reasonable projections of our sales of water, and theoretically, the sales of collection of sewer, sewage. So we don't need to use fund balance, so what we're looking at is rate adjustment that is very minuscule, even given the discussion we've just had about going to a half-adjustment for those multi-units. Toby will get into that in more detail as we go, but what we really have is a great advantage to be able to incorporate this new policy, still minimizing rate impact as the year goes on. And with that, I'd like to pass it over to Toby.
Sure. So Joe's given us a good lead-in. In essence, we applied the exact same methodology that we've used for years here in Milton, and what basically, at the end of it, we came down to, having looked at a number of years of consumption on both water and sewer sides, is that we will not need, before we started considering the full or half adjustment, we would not need a rate increase on the water side. We could keep the existing rates and confidently meet our capital needs, and that we would need an increase on the sewer side. The primary reason on the sewer side is the volume that has been sold has been decreasing year by year. And unfortunately, when you're in a zero-sum game such as water and sewer rate setting, if you're selling fewer units but still need to raise the same amount of money, unfortunately, you need to raise your unit volume rates. And that's in essence, a portion of what's happened on the sewer side, and as Joe said, in order to minimize past rate increases, we were using fund balance on the sewer side, where that's gone away, that's also a portion. But basically, if we'd just been setting on the exact same methodology as prior years, we would have needed a 3.7% rate increase on the sewer. Now, we need to add on to that since we've decided...
Excuse me a second, Toby. It's probably best to follow on page six of the report, if you're not there already.
On page six, there's four different tables. One shows your existing rates. The second table shows basically where we did not know what the board would decide to do as far as keeping existing billing policies or making changes. We decided to go ahead and calculate the rates that were needed for all three options for the coming fiscal cycle. So what you'll see is the top table is the current rate. The second table is what the rates would have done if you'd made no changes to billing practices, and that as a result, the rates that we actually need in order to break even in the coming fiscal period are going to be the bottom table, because those are calculated based on the half-adjustment consumption. And what that ends up showing is that we'll end up needing, on the water side, a 0.3% increase, and that's due to the half-adjustment process that Joe described earlier. And on the sewer side, we'll need a 4.3% increase across all tiers. And the reason for the 0.6% change between, I'm afraid, without looking at the tables, it would be hard for people hearing me, so I'm a little afraid of getting too into it. But in essence, that's a combination of the factors I described earlier that lead us to need a 3.7% increase, plus the impact of the change in billing process to account for the half adjustment. And so these are the rates that, on the bottom table of page six, that I would recommend that form my, pardon me, recommendation for the town for the coming fiscal year.
Can you call out those rates? Would you mind calling them?
Certainly. So on the water side, the recommendation is for the Tier One rates. These are all per 100 cubic feet. The water side in Tier One, $5.20. In Tier Two, $6.29 per 100 cubic feet. In Tier Three, $6.93. In Tier Four, $7.36. On the sewer side, the recommendation is for Tier One sewer rates to be $6.11 per 100 cubic foot. Tier Two sewer rate to be $11.53. Tier Three to be $12.70. And Tier Four to be $13.55 per 100 cubic feet.
And on average, how many cubic feet would a household use up?
So the, what the MWRA, or something that is used in the MWRA rate review, is that the average household of four people uses around 30, 100 cubic feet per quarter.
Actually, if we could refer to this table at the very back of your reports, I think it's the last page of the report. What that does is take various cases, a single-person household, a two-person household, three-person household, four-person household, the classic MWRA household, and then another four-person, a little bit higher consumption, and so on and so forth. And if you look down that table, you can see the impact, whether we consider the, at this point, we're considering the half adjustment, you can see what that impact is on an individual person who has, what was your question specifically, Dennis? Was it a four-person household or...
Yeah, we say a four-person household. What is the, because most people can't follow the numbers you just told them.
Correct.
They just want to know, how much is the average increase?
Take a look at page eight.
Yep.
We've broken this down into two tables that are a little, I suppose you might say, a little more accessible than the traditional one. For the MWRA average case, the current quarterly bill, if you look across all the way to the right-hand side, is $482. That's going to become, for the next fiscal cycle, $495. So it's a quarterly change of $13 for the average MWRA base case.
That's quarterly?
Quarterly.
Okay. Okay, so these numbers you gave us, I didn't understand that they are quarterly. So it's just an increase of seven or eight dollars per quarter?
Yes, for the four-person family, but for the, say, two-person household, it's only around $3 or so per quarter. So it's much, you know, it's entirely dependent on how much any given customer uses, to be perfectly blunt.
Okay. So with these rates that you're proposing, we'd say a family of four can expect an increase of about $20 in a year?
Average family of four, I would, yes, I would say it's going to be a little bit more than that.
$25 or something like that, in a year?
Yes.
For water and sewer combined.
Okay.
Some of that increase would have been necessary regardless of the tier split on the sewer.
It's on the sewer that, there's no doubt an increase was needed on the sewer because of the declining consumption that's being sold.
Can I ask, if you can remember, Joe, what was the increase last year? Was it much more than $25?
No, because last year, if you, had we not assigned fund balance money as a way to inject new revenue in, it would have been, would have been much higher.
Right.
So part of the catch-up on the sewer is the fact that we're not using that fund balance infusion of funds again this year. So we are getting that ratchet up, bump up a little bit this year, because we're not putting more outside money in.
Right, and if, and you mentioned on the phone to me that you can attribute a lot of this savings to new meters that you have put in?
Nope, not the new meter, just, you know, more aggressive, you know, metering and accurate, metering and therefore accurate billing, and really more aggressive collections. Not letting things go too long before we go to lean and working real closely with the treasury, town treasurer's office to get our collections in.
Just out of curiosity, when you look at the water rates, it's linear, I mean, they go up two cents in every tier. When you look at the sewer rates, it's not linear.
Well, on the sewer rate, remember, you have a much larger tier-based jump, so when you're talking about a couple of cents each tier, since the tier jumps are almost double in the sewer size on the water, these aren't direct, when you're talking about 0.3% rate increase, of course, applied to a fairly small number, we're never going, where we only go to the cent here.
Okay, I know what you're saying.
It's a rounding error is effectively what you're seeing the impact of.
Yeah, okay.
All right, so...
Good job.
We, what's the sense of the board? Do we want to vote the rates tonight?
I think so.
I think it's pretty good news, Katie. I think this is a good news story, that, you know, that the increase is moderate.
It could have been a lot higher, but I think our DPW director has done an amazing job with keeping up with the cost savings.
Right.
Well done, Joe.
Thank you. Hard work of the whole team, down at the DPW, not just me.
Someone like to make a motion?
Sure. Do we have one?
I don't think we have one written.
I will make a motion to approve the fiscal year 15 water rates at the following rates: tier one, $5.20; tier two, $6.29; tier three, $6.93; and tier four, $7.36. And the sewer rate, tier one, $6.11; tier two, $11.53; tier three, $12.70; and tier four, $13.55.
One second.
Just a second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Very much appreciate it.
Thanks, Joe.
Thank you, Toby.
Thank you for all of your hard work on this. I know this took a lot of, going back and revisiting the calculation several times on this one, so we appreciate all that you did. Thanks, Toby.
And thank you to you, Madam Chairperson, for being, you know, for bringing this to our attention with 88 Warrens.
Well, they've been in, I think, for a number of years now, raising this issue, and it's good that we've been able to get some resolution to it. It is an equity issue. Thank you, Toby. Joe, we also have a couple of appointments with you, for two new staff members.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the recommendation of the Public Works Director to appoint Aldo Binda, 15 Cypress Road, as a W-3 laborer in the Department of Public Works contingent upon approval of the Personnel Board.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just a quick question. These are, these aren't new positions, these are filling vacancies.
They're filling existing vacancies, that's right.
Then all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
I do want to apologize, I'm noticing on my memo, we got in the second appointment, which refers to, oh, I'm sorry, it is W-6, but that was in the Personnel Board's memo.
I'll move to recommend to approve the recommendation of Public Works Director to appoint Carlos Villarreal, 17 Railroad Avenue, Norwood, to the position of W-6 within the Department of Public Works, and that said appointment become effective immediately contingent upon the approval by the Personnel Board, a favorable pre-employment physical exam and a successful background check.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Anything else from me this evening?
I think that's all we have with you tonight.
It's going to be a late one, I'm awful sorry that it took so long.
It's an important topic. Thank you very much.
Good night.
Good night.
Thank you.
Moving on to number 14, a discussion of the firefighter medical expense override ballot question. We touched briefly on this at the last meeting, and I thought I would just report. I spoke with the Chair of the Warren Committee about this article and have a call into the Chair of the School Committee, but have not been able to connect with him yet. The Warren Committee Chair asked some questions regarding the $1 million that was set aside, and as a result, the town administrators put together some financial information for us. This may be something that we want to have a discussion about, but maybe not take any action on until our, it would be my suggestion, until our meeting next week, so that we can-
We still have time.
Yes, we have time, so we can continue reaching out to some other elected boards and solicit some more input.
Yeah, I mean, my tendency would be to get it on the ballot and know about it, but, I mean, if it has to happen this year, I think it should happen sooner rather than later for planning purposes. And from the initial analysis, it looks like it does.
Yeah, yeah.
If it, if it didn't make the November ballot, do we have, is there enough money in the set aside to pay next year's bill?
That's very questionable.
Yes, it has.
Okay.
Very questionable.
No, it was sent out today.
If there's not, where would we come up with the money?
Wouldn't have it.
Operating budget.
Right.
Operating budget, okay.
So Emery, do you want to maybe just give a brief update on where we're at with the set aside?
Absolutely, Madam Chair. The balance at the end of fiscal year 14 was $557,098. We estimate, from going back and doing assumptions from fiscal year '09 through fiscal year 14, that the yearly medical expenses are about $450,000 a year. So if we plug that in for fiscal year 15, and add in the state reimbursement that we are going to get of $300,000, it would leave us a balance for fiscal year 16 of $407,098. So we would be short of our projection of $450,000 for medical. Now, this is a tough, it's a guesstimate, because we just don't know in a given year what the medical expenses will be. Some years they're high, some years they're low, it just depends on the health.
So that $450 is an average?
An average of the fiscal '09 through fiscal 14.
Okay. And for the sake of what we're talking about, this is, the state has authorized us, just for people who are viewing this, that the state has given us, and this went, this has been vetted through town meeting, we submitted a request for this Home Rule petition to the legislature, it's been enacted, the town has approval to go out and seek an override to pay the medical expenses of a firefighter who was injured a number of years ago. It would be a special type of override, a special fund would be created, and the only purpose that could be paid out of that fund, assuming an override question were to pass, would be payments for medical expenses for public safety personnel. It's broader than just one person, but it's public safety personnel. And the authorization to have this override would be for as long as the medical expenses exist and need to be paid. So it's not something that's a permanent, it would be probably a long-term addition to the tax base, but it would be not a permanent one, it would expire at some time.
And it would be varying amounts every year, because the way we set it up was the cap in the fund will be half the amount. So if there's already money in the fund, if we didn't need the whole $500,000 from the year before, then we would only raise enough to get it back up to the $500,000.
And would this be a one-time override that would give us the money every year?
Yes.
Yes.
It would be somewhat similar to that exclusion, it wouldn't be subject to 2.5 percent escalation year after year. So it's kind of a hybrid, it's a unique animal.
And what had been happening previously, because it's been a number of years since we first started incurring this expense?
2007.
2007. So the town had been borrowing to pay these expenses, which meant it was being bonded and long-term, so we're paying a lot of debt service on that. But finally, the Department of Revenue stepped in a couple of years ago and said, this really needs to be handled differently by the town.
And they were correct.
Yeah. And Rick Neely, who was here earlier tonight, had raised at a town meeting that it was questionable whether we should continue to take that approach, that was a couple of years ago. So-
And I think a lot of people will ask the question, is this a less expensive route for the town than borrowing?
Yes.
Yes.
And I know the answer is yes, but I think-
If you're not paying the debt service-
You're not paying interest in your-
Against the cost.
And these are expenses that the town is legally obligated to pay for.
Correct.
And if we don't, if we were to not pass an override for this issue, it would be funded out of the operating budget, so that would impact what's spent on other budgets. And in a tight year, that would mean some, that would have some real impact.
Right.
So the question we want to work out with the Warren Committee and at least get input from other boards is, what would the timing of this be? Should it, is this the year to put this on the ballot, November or April? The Warren Committee has talked about an operating override, they were talking about it last year, so our, I can start-
So Katie, is the question, do we want to have this voted on in November or in April? Is that correct?
Timing, yes, the timing is-
If it's in April, there's a possibility we may have an operational override as well.
Yeah, if we're going to do it, I, my feeling, if we're going to do it this year, then we should do it in November for multiple reasons. Number one, it's going to get confusing if you have two override questions on the same ballot, and that April will be the only other opportunity to have it. And secondly, just for planning purposes, you'd know what you have to do.
You know you're funded for '16 at least.
Right.
Yeah. And going forward. Okay.
So why don't we reach out to further, I'm happy to make a couple of calls to some of the chairs of these other boards to let them know what our thinking is, solicit their input into what the timing should be. I think the Warren Committee is the key board to reach out to on this.
Yeah, you have to determine if they're going to go, if they're going to request an operational budget override.
Yeah, or at least, or at least to get their sense of timing and whether they think, whether they're in agreement that November works, you know, just in the sense of collaborating with other boards and trying to work one-
But I agree with, I agree with what Tom said, we, I don't think we need two overrides in one, in one-
On one ballot.
In one ballot, yeah.
Could potentially be very confusing.
Yeah.
Okay, so shall we, do you want to put this on the agenda for the next meeting on the 19th?
Yeah, I think so, I think so.
Okay, then, moving on to number 15, Zero Central Avenue. We have a quick update on Zero Central Avenue. We are going to be discussing this again, strategy in executive session later on in the meeting, but our special legislation that we had requested has been enacted, it's been signed by the Governor, so we do have the authorization that that legislation would give us to acquire one parcel and to transfer the parcel subject to a mixed-use building being developed. I think we've had enough discussion about what that covers. So that has been enacted, and that is a possibility for us. We did receive one demolition bid last week, I believe it was Thursday was the date for the bids, and they were open, there was only one bid, it was approximately $347,000, which is greater than the amount that we had budgeted. There is a Conservation Commission, or there, at this hour, there probably was a Conservation Commission hearing tonight.
Still going on.
Still going on, okay. Regarding Zero Central and 131 Elliott Street. So Mr. Prandak is back, and I think Mr. Clark might still be down there. I'm sorry, Joe?
We're done for tonight.
Oh, Bill said he had to stay down there, because-
He's watching.
He's there for other reasons.
Okay.
Okay. Is there anything that you're able to report from their public meeting?
Joe Prandak, Building Commissioner. We presented a preliminary proposal to the Conservation Commission, but they really do need more information. Some of the bid spec, some of the specifics of how the building's going to be torn down and how the asbestos is going to be handled was left to the contractor in the bid spec by design, because we don't want to, as a town, we don't want to specify how they take certain steps. So the Conservation Commission was unable to really go much further, because they have to be a party to that, they have to see the final proposal as to how it's all going to come together. And they basically requested the same thing of characterality.
So is there a continued hearing day, Joe?
There's a continued hearing day, tentatively September 9th. They said that, they indicated that if we could put stuff together prior to that, they would, they would consider holding a special meeting just for this purpose.
Okay.
There's a lot of pieces to the puzzle.
Well, that's good, thanks for that update. Great, thanks.
I think it's important to know, Madam Chairperson, that there were, up to 10 bid packages went out for the demolition, yet only one came back.
Yeah, that sounds, I'd be curious to understand why.
I did contact one of the contractors, they're a huge outfit out of Rhode Island, that were very interested, and they deal with the MBTA a lot. And I guess the major concern for them was that there was a proviso in there that the building had to come down within seven days, and they said it can't happen in seven days. So my feeling is that that's the reason why most people did not bid on it, for fear of penalties if the building wasn't down in seven days. So I'd like to speak to, you know, our Building Commissioner and whoever else sometime in the future, in the near future, to see if there's a possibility of going back out to bid and changing, and changing some of the specs in it. Because $357,000 to take down a building, to me, is overpriced by about $200,000, in my expertise.
Yeah, and I'm just concerned, there's just one bid, so I moved it nothing-
It is one bid, and it's, yeah.
And use what our estimate was, it's considerably above what our professional, you know, estimated that the cost should be, so.
And I'm saying, just for the sake of a delay, a small delay, we may get four or five bids back in, you know, $150,000 less. Is it worth it? I think it is, because it's-
Well, the bid's being reviewed now by the Building Commissioner and by Town Council, so it's not something for us to vote anyway tonight or to have a substantive discussion about, but we can certainly, we can certainly explore these issues.
Right, but I think, I think to Dennis's point of, if we're going to reject the bid, we should reject the bid soon, and so we can go back out to bid. I mean, I'm really concerned about just awarding it because it's so much higher than what the estimate was to awarding it on a sourceless bid. I would probably vote against it, but-
Okay, well, I think we should let the review process play out for purposes of tonight's meeting, and if we have another meeting scheduled for Tuesday, we can-
Yeah, I agree.
-get it up again, but we should wait for the legal review and for the Building Commissioner's review to see if there's any issues that, any other issues that make him up that we need to talk about.
Okay.
Okay. All right, and as I said, we're going to have a, we're going to have a discussion of strategy in executive session. So moving on to number 16, Curry College pilot payment.
I'll make a motion to accept a check in the amount of $56,573 from Curry College, which represents Curry's voluntary pilot payment for the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2014.
I'll second that.
Discussion?
Other than just to make the public aware of how that pilot payment is calculated, it is a $56,000 check, and it was an agreement that goes back to, what, 2005? Was it David Colton?
Yes, under David Colton.
That basically figured out what the assessed value on all the Curry buildings were at the time, figured out what the tax, real estate tax would have been on that, and then took 10% of that number, and then it escalates by 2.5% every year. If Curry buys a property and takes it off the tax roll after that 2005 date, then they pay, again, 10% of what the tax, the lost tax revenue was of that building coming off the tax rolls, so.
And Dennis, you mentioned earlier that the Pilot Committee, you might want to give an update on that committee's work at some point.
Oh, really?
Maybe one of the September meetings, we can-
Sure.
Schedule an update for the board on that. Okay, that motion was seconded?
Yeah.
Okay. And any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Number 17, this is a donation from Beth Israel Deaconess Hospital, Milton, for the Deer Camp program for the Police Department.
Okay, I'll move to accept a check in the amount of $1,000 from BID Milton Hospital to be used specifically for the Police Deer Summer Program.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I'm going to abstain from that one. I am serving on the board at the hospital, and I was not involved in this $1,000 donation for the Police Deer Program. Boards and committees, we have an appointment of the Commission on Disability.
I'll make a motion to approve the appointments of the following residents to the Commission on Disability to serve through July 2015. Ryan O'Connell, Leslie Collins, Daniel Sacco, Joseph Tierney, Diane DeTulio Agostino, and Building Commissioner Joseph Prandak.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Number 19, the warrant closed on August 4th, a week ago Monday, and we are going to reopen it this evening to add an article, just to cover all our bases, to clear up a title with respect to the 1,200-square-foot parcel at the Zero Central Avenue site. There's a housekeeping article, and we have a proposed motion.
I'll make a motion to open the October 27, 2014 Special Town Meeting warrant to add an additional article sponsored by the board that would authorize the board to acquire a parcel located at Central Avenue and Elliott Street and close the warrant.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Number 20 on our agenda is a discussion of the October Special Town Meeting articles, and we have a request from- And we have a request from the Planning Board to co-sponsor a couple of these articles. Actually, the first one, I'm going to be recused on the first one, which relates, Tom, to the Capital Improvement Planning Committee, and the town accountant is not here. He was getting laid, so the town administrator asked her to tell her not to stick around for this. If you could give an update, I will be recused on this one because it involves a bonding.
Okay.
And I'm going to step outside and you can tell me when we're ready.
Okay, so Article 1 just relates to the Milton Canton Water Agreement and the master plan water and sewer study that was conducted recently. Basically, what has happened, we had an agreement with Canton for many, many years that we were supplying water to Canton for certain areas of Canton that they didn't have the pressure to serve. And at some point in time, about a year and a half or two years ago, Canton improved their water system such that they could service those communities. The problem is, is we were so interrelated that if they turned, if they stopped using our water, it was going to affect Milton water at the same time, by creating dead ends and pressure issues and everything else. So the long and short of it is, a combination of that having to, because they certainly want to get off of our water because it's cheaper for Canton to use their own system. So part of the master plan was, what is it going to take to accomplish that, plus taking a look at the water storage tanks that we have, which are 70 or 80 years old now, and are in need of replacement. That whole mess is something in the order of $5.
$5.4 million.
$4 million.
Three water tanks and infrastructure work.
Right. And it would have to be bonded, and it will become part of the water and sewer rate, will become part of the water and sewer enterprise debt service payment. I don't know what the impact on rates are going to be. We had talked to Joe as part of the Capital Committee of perhaps pushing off for maybe one year the replacement of some of the meters to sort of kind of, there's a, I think, a five or six-year project right now to replace all of the water meters, which is fairly costly. And if, just for terms of pushing it off the debt service schedule for a year, I think would help in terms of just lowering the total debt service, the impact on water and sewer. So that's kind of the plan at this point. And again, what the impact on the rates is, is hard to say at this point, but Joe is going to look into that. But that's what Article 1 does.
And you will need to approve the Capital Improvement Planning Committee's recommendation and forward it to the Warrant Committee?
Yes.
Which is the three water tanks and the infrastructure work in the amount of $5.4 million.
And this is to service, just so that the public knows, this is to service the area up around the Blue Hills Mountain, Carls Brook and Blue Hill River Road.
Yes, that's correct.
And it's.
The piping does that, the water, the water storage tanks, basically the whole town, but, you know, it's, that's basically to allow the ability, and you need Joe here really to explain this fully, but to fully charge the system, especially if you had a big fire and you drain all the, you drain the system down, you'd run out of pressure. So the tanks somehow accomplish that.
It helps to regulate, yeah, they regulate that pressure.
That's an accountant's view of it, but.
Exactly the way those.
Yes.
Okay.
So you need to vote to approve the recommendation of the Capital Improvement Planning Committee and forward the recommendation to the Warrant Committee.
Okay, so I'll make a motion. Okay, so I'll second that.
Katie, back there?
We should probably vote it, so any further discussion? I mean, seeing not all's in favor.
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Go get Katie. Okay.
Yes.
Okay, so we have some, we have a request. Get this back on. So we have requests to co-sponsor some articles with the Planning Board. We also have some articles that have been prepared by various town departments or people, and we'd like to ask whether we want to submit them. Yes?
I have a question on Articles 2 and 3. Should we make the decision to go with a combined enterprise fund? Who will be able to, and I don't know that we will, but would we be able to change those articles sufficiently to allow that to happen? Because that is your option, is one enterprise fund for water and sewer, a separate, or a separate enterprise fund for each one.
The way these are, these are two separate articles, so it would set up two separate water.
I think Joe was leaning towards two separate ones.
It would set up a water enterprise fund in this.
But we do have a consultant coming in to kind of go through all that. I mean, I'm sure there are pros and cons to either.
Well, so Tom, is your question, can we do it at this stage or can we do it at a town meeting if we?
Well, I guess, yeah, I guess what happens if that consultant does suggest that, well, you probably would be better off to have a single, are we?
I guess it depends on the timing, because when is we going to print it? Early September, late, mid-September?
Mm-hmm.
So we'd have, depending on when that process plays out, if we can get it, maybe Amy should check with the consultant and explore that preliminarily and see what's the practice in other towns. I just assume that there are separate funds.
I'm not sure, yeah.
But is that, you're saying that it's common to have one?
I don't know if it's common, but I know you can have one.
Okay. The only issue, I think, is when we're at town meeting, whether something's outside this scope.
Yeah, I know, yeah.
But at this stage, they've been drafted. If we find out that the consultant really recommends one, we can handle it at this stage.
I suppose we can open the closing again if we had to before it goes to print.
I'll have the town accountant call the consultant tomorrow and get his recommendation.
Okay. Other articles that we have, well, why don't we, should we go through them numerically? So 2 and 3 are the sewer and water enterprise. 4 is the libraries article regarding the Capital Committee. And an update on that is that at the last meeting, I think I mentioned that we had seven members on that. We actually have eight, because as you mentioned, Tom, the Consolidated Facilities Director was appointed. So this article would actually create the odd-numbered committee, which is one of the issues we talked about, if we have a ninth member on that committee. Article 5 is the tree planting article. Senator Joyce asked us, when he was here at our last meeting, to submit this article.
Now, this is going to require us to find.
Funding, yes.
Funding for it, yes.
I believe his recommendation, we ask for $10,000 for trees.
That's typical what we have in the past, yeah.
Yes, and he did mention that there's a state reimbursement program, a new one, that we should look into exploring what the, you know, what the details are. We could probably ask the DPW department to get some details on that.
Mm-hmm.
The landfill access road, change of purpose.
Otherwise, I suppose we could do capital stabilization, but we'd require two-thirds vote, but.
Or, yeah, or possibly re-appropriating money from the Reserve Fund article last year if we don't need it to this article. There's a few different options we can let the Warrant Committee consider. Other than the landfill access, next we have two sign articles, one for the business district, one for residential districts. And the Planning Board, I believe mainly Alex Whiteside with comments from other members of the Planning Board and from our board, has put forward a business district signage that would address our concerns about illumination and flashing signs.
Right.
The residential sign by law, we don't have one currently. Alex says it's prohibit, signs are prohibited except for temporary signs in residential districts. And this has been talked about for quite some time, so he thought that this might be a good time to take this issue up.
So this would allow signs for non-conforming, pre-existing use businesses in residential areas? I think it says that.
Does it say that? I don't recall. It's been a week or so since I looked at it. It does address a lot of issues about, you know, freedom of speech signs, real estate signs.
Right.
Island maintenance.
It would allow, for example, you know, should the nursery get a permit to operate as a business in the residential area? It would, I believe it's, it's signage for that.
Yeah, Section E, signs for pre-existing, non-conforming business use. That would be a pre-existing sign.
Right. And it would treat them basically as the same as the sign law in the commercial. I think that's what it says.
So the Planning Board has submitted these. They've asked us to co-sponsor them, and I would be willing to co-sponsor them.
Yeah, I agree.
Is everyone in agreement? Okay. Article 9.
Can we get somebody in, though, to basically talk about these things? I mean, especially the, especially in the residential district, just to kind of get my head around the different sizes. I mean, there's so many different sizes that we're talking about and.
The town planner was supposed to be here, Mr. Hurley, but he is still downstairs at the Conservation Commission meeting because the, he's listening about the.
But otherwise, in concept, I'm fine with it. I just have no concept of what a 15-square-foot sign is.
We can approve them tonight so that we get them to the Warrant Committee and we can talk about them again on the 19th.
The Planning Board has to have a public hearing on these anyway, so we can always attend the hearing and also go to the Warrant Committee discussion about these when they take them up, or certainly we can invite, we could even invite the Planning Board to come in here if we wanted to, to have a cheer, or maybe Bill would feel comfortable covering these for the Planning Board for us. But, so are we comfortable co-sponsoring?
Yeah.
7 and 8, okay. Article 9, a grandfathering article, that's a Planning Board article. 10, first story determined by grade, these are Planning Board articles. 11 is the townhouse development.
Do we already have an article on first story determined by grade?
I don't know. You mean recently?
Two years ago.
I think it was something to do with garages, was it?
I don't recall.
Accessory structures.
Accessory structures, yeah.
This is to help reduce the case load of the zone of the fields with older houses.
Take this in, to the Warrant Committee.
Oh, okay.
Don't be dire required now. Add on to, develop onto the zone of the.
Ah, okay. Makes sense.
Okay.
They haven't asked us to co-sponsor those. I think the Planning Board is probably comfortable with not getting as involved in those. Article 11 is the townhouse development. They haven't asked us to co-sponsor that one. 12 is accessory structure height, another Planning Board. 13 is the one that they, another one that they asked us to co-sponsor, which was the establishment of a master plan, I should say, implementation committee.
Yes, I agree with that totally.
It's changed a bit since Emily Innis was in to talk with us about it. She's made some changes so that the committee would exist for 10 years.
I'd rather be in a standing committee.
Yes. Yeah, I'd be comfortable co-sponsoring this one as well. Article 14 is what we discussed with Steve Morash earlier tonight, the fire station facilities renovation. That one's being reviewed by town council. It's possible there may be some changes that need to be made to that.
We always have this question, should that be a selectmen-sponsored article or can the Firespace Needs Committee sponsor it?
Oh, they can. I mean, they're an appointed, committee appointed by the moderator, so they can. Article 15, easements. Bill discussed this when he was at our meeting the last time. Is there anything that we need to discuss about it tonight?
I think so.
Eminent domain.
It's the easement article, so that it'll be a boilerplate article and it will be approved. Town meeting will approve it every year, and then throughout the year, you, the board of selectmen, can approve easements, so that won't, so that it won't hold up projects.
You could read it, Emery, very quickly.
Mm-hmm.
Change to the.
We're on Article 15.
15, yeah.
Yep.
Bill, would you like to join us at the table? We're near the end of discussing the fall town meeting articles. Going through the.
Yes. Thank you.
You've had a busy night, we know.
Shift gears.
I think it's worded wrong. Number 15.
This is drafted by council.
How's our Dennis?
Mine says, to see if the town will vote to authorize the board of selectmen to acquire by gift, by eminent domain or otherwise.
No, that's 17.
No, that's.
15.
15. To see if the town will vote to authorize the board of selectmen to acquire by gift, taking by eminent domain or otherwise.
No, that's not the right, we're talking about the easement article. That's the one.
Yeah, that says Article 15.
I think it probably goes along.
All right, I'm looking at the paper copy.
I'm looking at the paper copy, too.
I'm looking at the paper, the paper copy is correct.
That's why I was confused.
Incorrect, I'm sorry. I was looking at a different, I'm looking at a paper copy that shows it a different one.
Then Article 17 is the eminent domain.
Right. So 15 is the easements bill. Is there anything you want to add about or speak to on that?
We don't have it.
Okay, so it's to see if the town will vote to authorize the board during fiscal year 2015 to acquire on behalf of the town any and all easements for the following purposes: roads, sidewalks, vehicular and/or pedestrian access or passage, drainage and utilities, and to abandon or relocate easements acquired for any of the foregoing purposes.
Yes.
Okay, and what's the purpose of that?
The, the temple is putting in their building. There is a water line that will go in to that property. The water line is, as with any subdivision, brings the water line in and the town owns the water line.
Mm-hmm, so there's an easement in.
And it needs to be an easement. And to get that easement reverted back to the town, we would need to go to town meeting because we're taking.
So this gives us just the authority to do it ad hoc, basically?
Yes, we can do it. We have to do this once a year. From now on, this will be on every May's town meeting, just like the rest of the boilerplate articles.
Gotcha.
Sorry, so 16, the numbering is probably different. This is the special purpose fund.
Yep.
For the, in the event that there's a future operating override, that the funds could be held in a special purpose fund. And Article 17 is the housekeeping article that we just added with respect to Zero Central Avenue.
That's the eminent domain.
That's the eminent domain, yes. Yes.
17, yeah. Yeah, that's here.
Okay, so do we want to, why don't we take a vote just to co-sponsor the three articles that we've indicated we'd join the Planning Board on, which are the signs in a.
Articles, I think? Article 7.
Articles 7, 8, and.
And 13.
13.
I'll make a motion to co-sponsor with the Planning Board Articles 7, 8, and 13 for all town meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Any discussion on any of the other articles? The process from here is that they'll be submitted to the Warrant Committee. It's, you know, 17 articles, this will be a lot of work for that committee over the next few weeks, and they are a committee that has eight new members, so it's, it'll be a lot on their plate, and I'm sure we'll get notice of when some of their meetings will be so that we can attend and go to some of these. We'll probably have to go and walk through with them why we're submitting some of them. But the Planning Board public hearing may be something that we want to attend also. If we have nothing further on this topic, we'll on to the town administrators' report.
Yes, Madam Chair, in the interest of time, I will just report out on two items. On August 6th, the Chairman and the Board and I attended a meeting with Historic New England, Diane Ferrari, who's the CEO of Historic New England. She just came and kind of gave us a preliminary overview of what they would like to do up at the Eustace Estate. They are planning to reach out to all department heads in the next few months and go over what their, what their project, what they would like to do with their project. And once they speak with every department head and get the clear go-ahead to move forward on their recommendations, they will come back before the full board and give a presentation. The second thing I'd like to report on is the meeting on August 7th over at the Council on Aging, which was the pre-25% community meeting on the East Milton Deck project. It was well-attended, about 30 residents attended. It was held by Howard Stein, Hudson, and your planning director, Phil Clark. It focused mostly on. It focused mostly on the need for... To keep the slip lane within the project, and it showed raw data that the Howard Stein, Hudson has compiled over several months to warrant and substantiate the need to keep that slip lane. However, what they will do is they will narrow that slip lane in order to help alleviate the fast cars moving through that and coming out onto Granite Avenue. They hope to have the 25% design phase meeting late fall, early winter. And so the project is...
Actually, by the end of September. The 25% will be by the end of September. The 75% would be eight weeks thereafter, at least eight weeks thereafter. So that is probably first of the year.
So at this point, it's too preliminary to know how they're going to deal with the crosswalk issue at that slip lane, to deal with the fact that you've got people trying to cut across the Basset Street and cause... That you've got the Basset Street traffic trying to cut across this way.
That's actually in there. They actually brought up the issue of Basset Street, looking at the numbers, taking that light out of just being a pedestrian light and putting it into part of the queue for the rest of the safety lights, which would then allow some of the Basset Street traffic to be able to...
Get out.
Get out.
And then you've got Basset Street, and then you've got the traffic coming out of the Fruit Center directly, which is even worse, because that's making a straight shot straight across Granite Ave.
They do have all these things in there. The design is in the 25%. The particulars for the movements are in the 75%. If they can get the design to be accepted by Mast dot and Federal Highway, then they go and they take the pieces and make the pieces work, and they tweak it to the numbers that are required, the offsets, the queuing, the timing of the different lights, what kind of lights, and the distances between those crosswalks.
Okay.
That's it, Madam Chair.
The chair's report, the only thing I wanted to report is that we had scheduled a sidewalk for tomorrow evening regarding the yacht club and the Swift Hat Building. Because of the weather, we've gone ahead and canceled that. We're expecting to have rain all day, heavy thunderstorms late in the day, so we've canceled that. We're trying to reschedule it for the week of August 25th, I believe, but depending on people's availability, and we need to check with the owner of the Swift Hat Building and with the yacht club, so we'll... As soon as we have a new date for that, we'll get that notice posted. We added an item for the members' report because Mr. Cohane suggested that it will be... And I think, I agree, that it would be a good thing to do, so that if anyone's at a meeting or talking with someone that they want to report on, that we have an item on the agenda where we can discuss.
I can just talk about a couple of future things coming up. I'm going to be sitting down with DCR Commissioner Mari with Representative Timmelti to talk about the skating rink and the possibility of the longer-term lease on that in the near future. I think that's about it.
Okay.
I know I suggested it, but I was away, so I don't have anything to report.
Yeah, no, there may be nights, just like the chair's report, where there's nothing to report.
I don't have anything to report tonight.
It's just here to, in case we... It's a placeholder for us to use to announce anything. Citizen Speak Response. We had some comments made earlier tonight, and there is... The motorcycle issue, I don't recall that coming up since I was on the board. I could be wrong, maybe I'm forgetting it. It might have been before I was on the board.
It hasn't come directly to the board. It's been complaints to specific... Like, I've had complaints by Cheryl Flaitman's mother and Cheryl about the motorcycles. I've talked to Richard about it. Richard has come down and one... At that time, it was one particular individual that was... Lived in that area that had a motorcycle that was driving people crazy, and I know Richard did... The chief talked to him. But in fairness, I mean, you know, some of the things that were being cited in terms of general laws, I mean, there is a specific law dealing with motorcycle noise, and it's 82 decibels at 45,000 RPM or less. So it's street legal if it's less than 82 decibels. 82 decibels is fairly loud. And if it's more than 45,000 RPM, now it's 86 decibels. So that's Massachusetts law. So a bike is street legal if it is no noisier than that. I mean, I don't know how you tell that. I mean, I guess... But if it's got a... If it's got an inspection sticker on it, then presumably they would have checked that, right?
Okay. The issue that I wanted to respond to was what Mrs. Flaitman raised about the appointment to the Airplane Noise Advisory Committee. The issue there is that we have a grassroots group, co-chaired by Cheryl Flaitman, that has done a lot of work on this topic and has... Was the group that organized Congressman Capuano and Congressman Lynch coming to town back in January. They've done a lot of research, they've done a lot of work. Several members, well, some of the members of that group, but also some other residents, not only of Milton but of Hyde Park and other neighboring areas, are parties to a suit against the Federal Aviation Administration. And in talking with some people who had an interest in being appointed to this committee, one of our concerns was that we not appoint to an official town committee someone who is a party to a lawsuit against the FAA. And that's really the reason that we did not consider appointing Cheryl Flaitman, despite all of her good work with the grassroots group. And that grassroots group is remaining active, and they're going to continue to take an interest in this issue and do some public education. As far as I understand it, they're going to continue with what they had been doing. The official town committee will probably get input from them, or certainly hear from them, and there'll be an opportunity for communication back and forth. But the town committee has some residents on it, and it also has some elected officials, such as you, Dennis, and Roxanne Musto, who's the chairman of the Board of Health, and town employees who work in the public health area who are on that, and who have a little bit of a different role, which is really, as we said in the charge the last time, to work collaboratively with some of the organizations, the FAA, Massport, the CAC. Our two CAC reps are on that committee. So it's more of an official town committee, a little bit different than the grassroots group, but we did express that issue and that concern to residents who are parties to that suit against the FAA, which is certainly their right to take part in a litigation like that, but we wanted to separate that from the town committee.
If I could just elaborate on that a little bit, I think what Mrs. Flaitman said tonight, the mother, that she's recommending to her daughters not to share any information with... I would love if they would change their mind, because we really do need them. They have a wealth of information. They've, like you said, Katie, they are the grassroots organization. We rely on them for a lot of information, and we'll still rely on them for a lot of information. So I would hope they would change their mind, and, you know, we will incorporate them into being consultants with us along the way, you know?
They've certainly worked very hard.
Absolutely.
Anything else for Citizen Speak Response?
No, other than getting back to the motorcycle thing, maybe we should ask the chief to at least see if there's... We can have some...
We can look into that for...
Increased enforcement in that area. There is no question, I mean, I hear them, my house is far back off the street as I am, they're loud.
The issue too, Tom, I guess, is it is a state road, so maybe the state police should be notified.
Except I think we have jurisdiction for patrol on that. 138, I think, don't we?
Yeah, we do.
138?
Well, we can certainly do some follow-up with the police department on this issue and let them know about the concerns that were raised to us.
Doesn't preclude them.
Right.
Okay, and we are going to look into the issue that Steve Morash raised about the IDs, and between Mr. Prondak and the town administrator, we'll follow up on that. Future agenda items, we talked briefly about the five-year financial plan, and I thought we might want to put that on sooner rather than later. Maybe not the August 19th, it doesn't sound like it'll be ready at that point.
No, they'll probably be ready for the next meeting.
September.
September. I know the warrant committee chairman is very anxious to have a presentation to the warrant committee on that as well. Any other future agenda items we should put on our list?
We can email them.
Okay. All right, then. We had scheduled an executive session followed by a meeting of the Governor Stoughton trustees. We're going to... So why don't we recess this meeting so that we can go to the Governor Stoughton meeting, come back, and go into executive session, and then adjourn from executive session?
Okay.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So we'll convene a meeting of the Governor Stoughton trustees, and Mr. Clark is at the table with us and has had some conversations with Pulte, which is the developer, regarding the research, the study that's being... The archaeological study that's being done. Do you want to give us an update, Bill?
Sure. The archaeological consultant that has been hired to study the site filed an application with Mass Historic. Mass Historic reviewed the application and wants more information. The more information requires...
More money?
Ultimately, more money, yes. It needs to be a little more invasive to truly determine what the structures are. There's a few different sites that they want more information on, and it's a very labor-intensive, stone-by-stone. You take pictures, you write it, you draw it, and it's... You have to catalog every single thing that comes out of the ground in that particular area. Do it with Mass Historic. They've agreed to it, they've come up with a price where we've been asked not to discuss the individual sites that Mass Historic wants. There's a particular section of state law that allows that to take place, because it's... Mass Historic doesn't turn over what it finds where they find it, and this is how they protect it.
For purposes of protection of the site.
Yes.
Okay, and we have an increased cost that's associated with the extra work.
So initially, you would have... The trusts would only have to spend $4,150, which is half of the original survey, and now it is going to increase to $10,568.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the expenditure of $12,836.20, 50% of that being the town share, 50% of that being paid by Pulte.
That's the additional amount over the 8,300, okay. Do we have a second?
I'll second now.
Any discussion? It is increased cost, which, you know, it's coming out of trust funds that are set aside for a charitable purpose, but it's a legitimate purpose for the trust to do this, and it's being requested by the Historical Commission, so...
So it's to be a total of about $10,500?
Yes. Yeah, and as Tom said, it does move the purpose forward, so...
Yeah.
If no other discussion, then I'll...
It also takes into account your remaining acreage. So that was incorporated into the whole study.
That's good.
Yeah, that is good.
Okay, then if nothing else, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Okay. Motion to adjourn the Governor Stoughton meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Okay, so we will reconvene, or I guess resume is the correct word, the meeting of the board of selectmen. And I will move that we enter executive session for the purpose of discussing elective bargaining strategy, firefighters' union, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property, Zero Central Avenue, enter review executive session minutes for release to the public, believing that having these conversations in open session would have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the body, and to return to open session to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Mr. Cohane?
Yes.
Mr. Hurley?
Yes.
And myself, yes. We're in executive session.